Good afternoon and welcome to the October 28th, 2025 School Board Workshop. The time now is 1:05 PM and in just a moment, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and reflection. So at this time, would you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Applause).
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. With me this afternoon here in the boardroom, I'm going to introduce our board members and other staff. On my far left, we have Mrs. Donna Brosmer representing District 4, Mrs. Krista Goodrich representing District 2, Dr. Gilbert Evans, our School Board Attorney. Then over to my far right, we have Ms. Celeste Gilmore representing, she's our agency clerk. She represents us all. Then we have Ms. Jessie Thompson representing District 3. Then we have Mr. Ruben Clone, our Vice Chair, representing District 5. We have Dr. Julio Nazaravaya filling in for just a short time today. Dr. Balgobin will be here. She had another engagement that she had to be at, at the start of this meeting. And then I am Jamie Haynes, your Chair, and I represent District 1. So today, we have four items in the workshop that we're going to be talking about. The first item that we're going to start with is a district audit update. We anticipate this will take at least an hour. And we have, here with us today, we have Todd Sees, who is our Chief Financial Officer. We have RSM, which is our internal auditing committee, I mean, company. With them is Laura Manlove and Michelle Coppola. And then we also have two of the members from our Audit Committee that are community members that volunteer their time to be on our Audit Committee, and that is Amy Williams and Stan Schmidt. So at this time, we're going to let them take it over.
Yes ma'am, thank you so much, Ms. Haynes. And as Ms. Haynes said, I am here on behalf of Dr. Balgobin. So she is at Daytona Beach News Journal 20th Anniversary Women in Business Event, celebrating the most influential women in business. So I have reason to believe that she will probably be recognized today at this event, so as soon as she's done, she will be here joining us. So Mr. Sees, thank you for joining us, our Chief Financial Officer. And with you, you have Ms. Amy Williams, CPA Audit Senior Manager, James Moore Company, Ms. Laura Manlove, Manager of Risk Consultant, RSM. There's also Michelle Coppola, as well, CPA Supervisor Risks Consulting, RSM. And they have a presentation to share about district audit updates.
Well, first of all, good afternoon, board members and Dr. Vaie and Chair, Madam Chair. I'm going to go ahead and just get us started here with, real quick, let's go ahead and answer, and this is each, this presentation is addressing guardrail number three, and improve operating efficiency and maximizing resources to support student learning. Okay. In Florida, school districts operate under more statutory audit layers than cities or counties. By law, the auditor general must audit school boards on a fixed cadence annually for smaller counties, or at least every three years for us larger counties. And that's on top of our other audits that we do here at the district. So these slides provide a snapshot of the different audit types that touch Volusia County Schools each year. We'll start with our cornerstone audit on the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. We'll talk a little bit about the operational audit. We're also discussing a little bit on the internal audit function and also the internal accounts, which is, the internal accounts audit is your school activity funds. Also, the component units that are included in our ACFOR, and that would be our Futures Foundation and most of our charter schools. And the performance and special audits that we can go through at the district. And we also have capital projects funds and performance or special audits as well. So whether it's other reviews that we encounter here, and that's really related to actuarial reviews and debt service. I mean, it's a little bit more scripted, so I didn't go too far off track, so I could just get the meat of it real quick. It allows me to read a little bit faster here. But feel free to ask questions of me, of any of these audits. RSM will be actually presenting the back end of this presentation with their own slide deck. So this, starting out with the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, also known as the ACFOR, is our cornerstone audit for the district. This engagement is performed by either the auditor general, or in years where they're not, when it's not scheduled with the auditor general, we have an independent CPA firm, they are external, their current Forbes, Marvis, Mazars, sorry. The audit provides reasonable assurance that our financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, and that the internal controls over financial reporting are sound by statutes, specifically Florida Statute 218.39. A financial audit is required every year, and the report must be submitted within nine months of the fiscal year-end. The scope includes testing of revenues, expenditures, capital assets, and compliance with laws and regulations. When applicable, the auditors also conduct what's known as a single audit. For federal awards, this requirement is if we expend one, more than $1 million, $1 million or more in major federal program funds under CFR Part 200. For state assistance, it's only triggered if we expend $750,000 or more in qualifying state project funds under Florida Statute 215.97, though this really applies to school districts, because the FEFP allocation that we receive in the general fund are not considered state projects, just to let everyone know that. And finally, the ACFOR audit also includes a review of IT, general controls, areas such as user accessibility, cybersecurity, change management, and since those systems are integral to the financial integrity, the auditors issue an opinion, a separate management letter under Florida rules, and a report on internal control and compliance, all of which are included in a published ACFOR each year. The operational audit is performed solely by the Florida Auditor General's Office. This audit is required under Section 11.45 of the Florida Statutes, and each school district must be reviewed at least once every three years. Unlike annual financial audits, which focuses on the financial statements, this audit looks at the operational performance, efficiency, and compliance. The scope and timing are determined by the legislature and auditor general, and each audit typically focuses on those key topic areas such as procurement practices, payroll controls, transportation efficiency, cybersecurity, school safety compliance. Findings from these reviews are informed statewide legislative reports, let me just say that again here, and just to make sure I say this clearly, findings from these reviews often inform statewide legislative reports and best practice recommendation. Ms. Wilson here could probably speak to that, since she did work for the Auditor General's Office. For example, the auditor general may compare Volusia Internal Controls and Efficiency Matrix against other Florida school districts to highlight opportunities for improvement or commend exemplary practices. The end result is a public report that only identifies any findings, but also includes management responses to those findings through corrective action plans, which a district will then follow up on. The process demonstrates continuous improvement, transparency, and that responsible stewardship of public resources. I'm just going to touch briefly on this one, because our auditors, your internal audit function here will be addressing this in our slide deck, but I just wanted to say, the internal audit function is managed through the School Board Audit Committee and carried out by the external audit firm, RSM. The function is separate from external audit, financial audit, and is designed to evaluate the effectiveness of internal controls, risk management, and compliance across all operations. The Audit Committee is established under Section 218.391 of the Florida Statute, works with RSM to develop an annual audit plan that prioritizes the district's highest risk areas. RSM, of course, will address this more in their follow-up, in our slide deck. The internal accounts audit, which is managed hereby or conducted by James Moore, is our school activity funds. Each of our 67 schools maintain what are known as internal accounts, sometimes called school activity funds. These funds handle transactions such as club dues, fundraisers, field trip payments, student activity revenues, all of which must be maintained under strict controls set forth in Chapter 8 of the Department of Education, what they call is the red book. We, that's all of our accounting codes that we have to follow for the district and for all school districts across the state, have to follow DOE Red Book guidance. Each year, the independent CPA firm, as I was mentioning, James Moore and Company, audits every school individually. Those audits ensure the principal and bookkeepers are properly accounting for those receipts, disbursements, and reconciliations in accordance with state guidelines. The results are then considered into a single report, and the summary of the internal audit or accounts is rolled into the district's ACFOR as part of our annual financial reporting. Any findings identified during these audits are reviewed by district management and the individual schools to ensure corrective actions are completed promptly. These processes reinforce strong stewardship and accountability of the money that they receive at the schools. So we're moving on here to component unit financial audits. Under accounting standards in Florida Statutes, certain entities are considered component units of the district, primarily Futures Foundation and Volusia Counties, for Volusia County Schools, and our charter schools operating within the county. Each of these organizations is legally independent, but because they serve the public education mission of Volusia County Schools, their financial results must be included or incorporated into the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report ACFOR. Each component unit engages its own independent auditor, typically a local CPA firm. Charter schools' audits are required under Section 1002.339J of Florida Statutes, and the Florida, and the Futures Foundations are also undergoes its own annual audit as a supporting nonprofit. Once completed, those independent audit reports are submitted to the district finance department for review. We ensure that they meet Florida DOE and GASB requirements before including them as discrete component units within our ACFOR. The process ensures full transparency for the community, allowing anyone reading those statements can see how that information kind of ties into the district's overall education Moving on to program audits and monitoring views, in addition to our annual financial audit, we routinely go through what is called program reviews, specifically for federal and state compliance audits. They are performed by agencies such as the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the Florida Department of Education, and other federal and state entities that oversee programs we administer. Reviews are generally risk-based, meaning that the frequency and depth depends on the factors such as size of the program, prior audit results, or identifying areas of concern. Common programs that receive this level of oversight include Title I, Individuals with Disability Act, or as we know it as IDA, school nutrition, and other federal or state grants that require strict adherence to eligibility, reporting, and procurement standards. These reviews differ from the annual ACFOR audit, because they focus on specific grant compliance requirements rather than the financial statement as a whole. Findings for these program audits are reported directly to the district, and we prepare a correct, and again, we would prepare a corrective action plan for any items identified. Those responses then are verified by the grant agency to ensure compliance has been restored. Together, these federal and state audits demonstrate the district not only, you know, reports the financial results accurately, but also spend restricted grant funds according to the program rules and regulations. This category covers what we refer to as the performance and special audits. These are not routine, they're not routine recurrent audits like the ACFOR would be, or internal audits. They are directed by the Florida Legislature or the auditor general when statewide or topic-specific reviews are needed. Examples might include audit examining effectiveness of specific programs or safety and security. They are typically performed by agencies such as the auditor general, Florida Department of Education, or in some cases, the U.S. Department of Justice, or other oversight bodies. These audits are generally one-time or periodic, and are designed to help both the legislature and the district identify areas where efficiency or effectiveness can be improved. Results are published, the district always provides management response and corrective action plan as required by statute. While they occur less frequently, these reviews play an important role in ensuring accountability and transparency of those local and state programs. The other reviews and studies, while not formal audits, are required by statute, accounting standards, or bond convenience. No support to support our financial statements. Each year, the district engages independent actuaries to perform valuations for workers' compensation, other post-employment benefits. The acronym there is OPEB, okay? These studies determine our long-term liabilities, which are then incorporated into that ACFOR that we're referring to. That the external audit review, and they rely on these reports to verify that our liabilities are accurately presented under GASB 68 and GASB 75. We also undergo annual continuing debt disclosure reviews. We just went through a series of those reviews, especially when you're issuing debt in the marketplace, or you're, yeah, I'll just leave it with that. And then which ensure we meet all the SEC rules, 15C 2 and 12, reporting obligation. What I wanted to say, and the other thing was refinancing, so if you're issuing or refinancing debts, that's, this is all the requirements that you have to go through. So these are, under that section rule, 15C 2, 12, reporting obligations for our outstanding certificate of participation and other bond issues. So in addition to the district's trustee and rating agency, perform ongoing surveillance of the government, governance, and financial position of the district. These reviews confirm that we are continuing to meet debt service coverage and reserve requirements. While these activities aren't classified as audits, they are vital to maintaining our fiscal credibility, district's strong financial position. Next one, we have construction closeout audits. They are target engagements performed at the end of a major building project, typically new schools or significant capital renovations. These audits are conducted by an independent CPA firm, currently Carr, Riggs, and Ingram are contracted with the district to perform those audits, and are designed to ensure that all project costs, contracts, change orders are promptly accounted for and compliant with the district policies and state law. The scope usually includes reconciliation of contract amounts, verification, retainage, and final payment were handled correctly, and confirmation that all required documentation such as warranties, liens, and final acceptance forms are in place. These are reviews, these reviews occur on a project-by-project basis than, rather than annually, and they provide an additional layer of accountability over capital outlay spending. The findings are reviewed by both our facilities and the finance operations, and the recommendations are incorporated into future construction management practices to improve efficiencies and control. Basically, what this does is we're auditing also the contractor to make sure that we're getting billed correctly. That's what this is. Okay? And then while these are not required under statute, they have become a best practice across Florida school districts to promote transparency and demonstrate the fiscal responsibility for taxpayer-funded construction. So this is what the, what does the auditor apine on? The slide just summarizes that auditor's opinion actually covered what's covered in the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFOR, I like to say, for short. The opinion covers the basic financial statements as a whole. That includes all of our funds, government-wide statements, and the accompanying notes. For the management discussion and analysis, that's right on the front end, it's in summary form, and the required supplementary information, that's kind of in, buried more down into the ACFOR as you're making your way through it, sections, the auditor performs what is called a limited procedures. They review that information for consistency, but they do not express an opinion on that. The other supplementary information, I'll also refer to as OSI, such as the combining schedules is audited in relation to the basic financial statements, meaning the auditors ensure that it ties back correctly to the underlying controls. Finally, as noted, the auditor opinion does not extend to the introductory or the statistical section found in the back of your ACFOR. Those portions provide additional content for the reader, but are considered unaudited narratives. So for example, if you want to see 10 years' worth of how much revenue we receive for impact revenues, you can find that right in your ACFOR book in the back second section, the statistical section. So how are, how do all those audits come together again? I'd just like to kind of go back over this. I did address it a little bit here, but I'd like to kind of rehash some of the stuff. This slide really shows how the other audits activities we discussed directly tie into the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So again, your still, your school's internal accounts audits, those annual reviews for the school activities are consolidated in summary form and included into the district's totals that appear in the ACFOR. Our component units, which includes the Futures Foundation and our charter schools that are audited by independent auditors, which are reviewed by those external audits, auditors, and those results are incorporated into the ACFOR or discrete component units. The single audit captures our compliance with federal grant requirements, and when applicable, state projects, I'm sorry, state project funds. That includes our schedule of expenditures, of federal awards, and any required corrective action plan, which also would be included in there. Lastly, internal control and IT-related matters identified during the annual audit are summarized in the Government Auditing Standards Report and the Florida Management Letter. All these elements float together to support the single unified financial report, ensuring that every part of our organization, from schools to charter and federal programs, is represented transparently in the district's published financial statement. So before I turn it over to RSM, the audit framework that we operate under is not only extensive, but also deeply interconnected. Every financial statement, actuarial report, and disclosures tie back to specific state and federal requirements, each government, each government by its own standard or code. To maintain compliance, our finance team must navigate and apply an array of technical frameworks, the governmental accounting standards, GASB, Florida Statutes, Florida Administrative Code, the Department of Education Red Book, and cost reporting requirements under that, under that book as well. These elements dictate how we classify, report, and reconcile every transaction, ensuring our records withstand audit testing at the state, federal, and bond trustee level. And because of these complexities, our work must be executed with precision and updated, continuing to reflect legislative and regulatory changes. Every audit we undergo, whether financial, operation, or otherwise, relies on the integrity of the foundation, as do the independent actuary studies and commissions. Each year that we are included in our ACFOR, the actuarial valuations, for example, feed directly into our financial audit, as we mentioned, and statements, and bond disclosure information is shared in a separate report to our bond. They take the, our ACFOR information as its audit, we have to provide additional information in what is called the bond disclosure agreement that gets published annually after we release our ACFOR. So in short, our audit environment demands expertise across multiple disciplines, accounting, law, policy, economics, all of that really collectively influences understanding and ensures that the Volusia County School remains fully compliant, transparent, and fiscally sound. So I'm going to turn it over to RSM at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sees.
Yeah, any questions for me at this point?
Any questions at this point? Thank you.
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing us to come here today. I'm Laura Manlove, I'm a Managing Director at RSM. With me today is Michelle Coppola, she's our Engagement Manager. She handles the day-to-day for the internal audit services that we provide to you all. And to my right, Amy Williams is a member of our Independent Audit Committee. I'm going to talk a little bit about their function and allow her to speak to you a little bit as well. Stan Schmidt is also here today, he's a member of the Audit Committee, been part of Volusia County Schools for a long time as well. So as you probably gathered from Todd's presentation, the independent internal audit function that Volusia County Schools has really is separate and distinct from the other types of audits that you all undergo. All of those work together very well to accomplish the pieces that they are supposed to accomplish, but your internal audit function is living and breathing and responsive to risk, and we are the only audit function that you have that works directly for you. All of those work together very well to accomplish the pieces that they are supposed to accomplish, but your internal audit function is living and breathing and responsive to risk, and we are the only audit function that you have that works directly for you and is designed to support you in your decision-making and your governance of this district. So a little bit about how we do that, that's what my presentation is going to be about today. So who are we? Who is RSM? Who's sitting in front of you? We are the fifth largest accounting firm in the United States, and we are the firm who is serving the most number of school districts as internal auditors in the state of Florida. We're proud to say that. We serve 12 different school districts in the state of Florida. And for many of us on the team, this is what we've been doing our entire careers. We are, you can see on our map here where we are serving and where our offices are located. And as internal auditors who specialize in school districts, we are deeply embedded in several of the organizations here in Florida, including FSFOA, FASBO and others. So you might have seen us around at industry conferences speaking. Some of the services that we provide to several of the school districts in Florida, you can see in these squares here. We do some financial advisory work, including anti-fraud and litigation and dispute management services. We'll do some specialty consulting down on the bottom left. If you recall, we did some work here at Volusia on student discipline, which is a really interesting topic for the state. On the top right, your traditional performance and operational audits, I'm sure you've seen us report to you. A P-card audit or a white fleet audit might be something more operational that we look at. And in your bottom right, IT, we also bring you a suite of expertise in the IT realm. Everything from cybersecurity to data protection to user access controls, anything that you might need, we are also able to, to address those needs through your internal audit function as well. Next slide, so who are we? I did a little bit of an introduction there. The face that is not with us today, Ryan Moore in the middle, he is your lead IT auditor, part of your core team. So he, he helps Michelle and I, since we are not IT, understand the IT risks and what you're facing both internally and externally and brings his team of experts to Volusia to help address through the internal audit plan any, any risks that we might be uncovering there. You will always deal with the three of us as your core team, although we are a large firm and we are spread across the state of Florida and, and the US. We are dedicated to your core team and any specific risks that you might need specialized expertise for, we will bring that subject matter expert to Volusia Schools through us. So you always have one throat to choke, if you, if you like to think of it that way, but you still have access to the, the depth and breadth of expertise that you may need at RSM to serve your needs. Next slide, a little bit about how we have seen Volusia Schools evolve since we have been on board and a little bit about what had been happening when Volusia County Schools started its internal audit function. So a history lesson for us educators in the room. When I first began here at Volusia County Schools, it was because of a Florida state statute that had been passed in 2019 requiring school districts over a certain size to have an internal audit function. There were a number of school districts that were listed in that legislation that would be impacted by that new ruling and Volusia County Schools was one of those that would have to create a brand-new internal audit function that this did not exist before. So we came along around 2020, you can see a February 2020 box. When we first arrived on the scene after a competitive solicitation to select RSM as your internal audit vendor, there had been four different superintendents within the previous five years. The amount of turnover and the amount of change that we walked into as your brand-new internal auditors was more than I had seen in any other district to date. The wake of the turnover and the change here at Volusia County Schools left, in my mind, a culture of volatility, of uncertainty, of siloed decision-making and in some cases, lack of trust. Lack of trust between board members and leadership, even between leadership and leadership, and sometimes lack of trust on who we are. Who is this internal auditor who's coming in and asking questions? It was really important for us to establish relationships with the board, establish relationships with leadership and help encourage and foster conversations about risk among the different stakeholders so that we could really understand what the internal audit function is hoping to accomplish. How can we help Volusia Schools move forward and improve and get on the same page with the mission and the best way to use us as your new internal audit function? Really, why did the Florida statute, Florida legislation create the statute to, to establish internal audit functions? So it, it was quite a process and we weren't quite done with superintendent turnover at that point. I believe I started with Scott Fritz and, and we did have an additional turnover after that. Rachel Hazel was our interim for a little while and then we found Dr. Balgobin at this point and we've now been working with Dr. Balgobin for about three years. In addition to the leadership turnover, the superintendent isn't just the only person who turns over. When there's turnover at the superintendent level, as you all know, there's turnover in several layers throughout. It has a huge ripple effect throughout an organization. Coupled with that, the district also was undergoing an ERP implementation. This is your main software that runs your operations and your business of the district. Oracle implementation started in 2019 and was halted in 2021. So not only do we have some turnover in leadership culture, style and people, but we also had turnover in our technology. So when you think about the big three running large organizations, people, process and technology, we've had disruption in all three of those. And I just wanted to take a moment and talk about that with you on this slide because I want you to understand that as your outside independent internal audit function advising you on risk, this is the biggest risk that I have seen in the past few years, is Volusia Schools working to remediate and recover from some of the volatility that it has had in its history. And the key to success, as you all are probably aware, in continuing to recover and repair from this volatility is to be mission-oriented and unified in support of how to move forward with your strategic plan. Working together as a cohesive board, working together with your superintendent creates synergy and creates a unified path forward and will help mitigate this risk that I see as your internal audit function. Next slide. So what is your internal audit function? What exactly do we do for you to support you in your governance journey here at the school district? The mission of this audit, of the internal audit function is, like I mentioned, to be your in-house eyes and ears and to be responsive to your needs. What does the board see as the biggest risk in Volusia County Schools? And how can internal audit support you in understanding facts and circumstances behind that risk so that you can make the decisions that you need to make to, to lead this district effectively? As I mentioned before, this is a required function now by statute. So whether it was required or not, I do believe it's a value add and hopefully you feel the same way. The way that Volusia County Schools structured its internal audit function is, in my mind and in RSM's mind, this is the best practice governance setup. Districts run their internal audit functions many different ways, but Volusia County Schools chose to use the model, as you can see on the right, of establishing an independent audit committee with which reports to the school board, but oversees the internal audit function. And the reason why that's a best practice is because since we are an in-house function that reports to you, in order to preserve the independence of this function and to be sure that we are looking independently at risks in the district and not being steered one way or another due to whatever is, you know, of interest at the time, that audit committee is an outside group of independent citizens appointed by you all who directs me, the internal auditor, on what risks to look at every single year. We have comprehensive conversation about what we've learned, about what we see. They come to the table with their own thoughts about what they hear in the news or the conversations that they've had with you all. We also have, of course, our one-on-one conversations with you all as well. But when the audit committee is in charge of representing you to govern and oversee me, the internal audit function, the result is an independent, unbiased view of risk so that we can be sure that we are allocating our time and resources to those things that matter the most to the district here. Next slide. When you think about internal audit, and I won't spend too long on this slide, but because we are a school district that operates in the public sector, you really do have to think about internal audit a little differently than you would say perhaps at a commercial entity or a for-profit company. There are considerations like public record, there are considerations like transparency and accountability that don't exist in a commercial company. And when you set up and establish your internal audit function, it needs to, to be run with the understanding that government operates a little bit different, right? And so that's what we have here at Volusia County Schools and we believe that we have set up the governance structure here in a way that best benefits the district going forward. A little bit about the audit committee. I know you got to see how we report to the audit committee, but I'd like to explain a little bit more operationally about what they do, what they do for you and how they help govern the, the internal audit function here. Amy Williams, to my right, is a member of our audit committee. I asked her to come today and just introduce herself to you so you can see one of your members and to talk a little bit about her role on the audit committee.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for welcoming us here today. I'm happy to be here to represent the audit committee. Myself and Stan are both members. I've been on the audit committee, I think, since inception, since it started. So just a little bit, my, my background, I've got over, I'm a CPA with over 30 years of experience in accounting, both public and private accounting, as well as in higher education. I've had three kids go through Volusia County Public Schools, so I do have a vested interest, you know, in the school board and in the audit committee itself. The school board is comprised of five members, myself and Stan, three other members and an alternate, and Ms. Haynes serves as our chair and your representative from the school board. So we work, RSM each year, I thought Laura mentioned it and I'm sure you've seen it, goes through a risk assessment procedure each year. They will do that based on interviews with you, watching other school board meetings, their experience, what's going on in the news, that kind of thing. And they will come to us and recommend what they have identified as high-risk areas. Hopefully, we'll go through them, we'll discuss them, we rank them, and then we'll make a decision based on what we see as the higher risk or the more important, you know, based on feedback from Ms. Haynes and the board, RSM, determine which ones should, we should do for the upcoming year. The ones that we don't determine do, don't get lost. We have an ongoing list that we keep. And the decision is based on time, budgetary constraints sometimes. Where we are, Laura mentioned the ERPs, you know, the change to the, in the ERP system. So it might make sense not to do one now and wait until that change, once procedures are in place. So those things come into play. And then from there, we meet with the board on a typically quarterly basis, I'm sorry, with RSM on the quarterly basis, and we go over the results of the audits that they've been conducting. They do a really good job of reporting and identifying for us any issues, high, medium and low risk. We'll discuss those. We have the opportunity to ask questions. In those meetings are also employees from the county that are involved in those areas. So the fleet management, you know, the people from the fleet management department were there. We have the opportunity to ask them direct questions and they have the opportunity to present to us how they're addressing the areas that were identified. And then in those same meetings, we will follow up on any open items from previous audits. So we're able to continually track if there's anything open, how those are being resolved from all the previous audits. So that's really the process for, and then we also are responsible for selecting or recommending a selection for the external auditors. When it comes time to go out for a bid, we review those and recommend selection for the external auditors. We also, all of the previous audits that were mentioned, we also get results of those audits, those as well and any recommendations that come up from those. We also review follow-up and resolution of all of those areas.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Moving to the next slide. As, as previously mentioned, we talked a little bit about how internal auditing in the public sector is a little different. We do have a national standard-setting body, our Institute of Internal Auditors, which sets guidance for how we should conduct your internal audit function. One of those performance standards is listed here and as Amy was alluding to, it includes a risk assessment that we must perform for you every single year. So I'm going to talk a little bit about now mechanically, what does the internal audit process look like as we move through the year and conduct your, your internal audit function for you. So on the next slide, you can see my little wheel. Let's start at the top right with the risk assessment, as I mentioned. This is really important and a really, really critical piece of your internal audit function because this is where we decide what are we going to audit this year. And if we aren't attuned to the risks in the district and don't have our eyes on the right ball that's in play, we may not audit the risk that's sitting right in front of you. So a comprehensive thorough risk assessment by your internal auditors and with guidance from the audit committee is critical to success of your internal audit function. And all of you know, we've, we have our annual meetings with each board member to get their input on risk and get your understanding of what is facing you, what are you hearing from your constituents? What have you run into around town as you've fulfilled your role as a board member? We need to know so that we can bake it into the risk assessment and make sure we understand where the risks are in the district so that we can design an appropriate audit plan for you and address what needs to be addressed. Once that risk assessment is presented to the audit committee and the audit committee directs us on which audits to perform this year based on the results of that risk assessment, we then move into the execution phase where we kick off our individual audits. We have kickoff meetings with your process owners. We talk through logistics, we talk through how are we going to obtain the information we need? What's the goal of this audit? What are the risks that we're looking to address? After the audit is executed, we move into vetting. Vetting is the process by which we, we review our results with management, make sure we got everything correct. Sometimes there may be information that might have been missing or a piece of information we misunderstood because we didn't read it correctly. The vetting process is crucial to making sure that you get an accurate audit result and that all the information that's pertinent to that audit area has been looked at by RSM and processed appropriately. Moving into communication, this is our final report where we are presenting to the audit committee and ultimately is transmitted to the board via consent. Follow-up process is also a critical part of your internal audit function. We don't just issue you a report and then say, see you later, good luck with that. We do a follow-up process where we track all of the open audit observations. We keep in touch with management, we, we, we might be a little incessant, sorry, to understand, are they remediating the things that they said that they would remediate? And are we closing the risk gaps that we said we would close? And we actually go back and retest. We don't just take their word for it, no offense, but we go back and retest. We'll look at documents again, we'll do our walkthroughs, we'll do our interviews, we'll look at our detailed testing and we will produce an additional report to tell the audit committee and tell you, did they actually do what they said they were going to do or do we still have some more work to do? A little more on that in a couple of slides, but just wanted to give you an idea of the cyclical nature of what your internal audit function does. This risk assessment does take place every single year, but as I've always told you in our risk assessment conversations, if you feel the need to have more frequent conversations than once a year, we absolutely welcome it and some board members do take us up on that and that is 100% appropriate. I'm going to go ahead and skip this because I think I've covered the risk assessment process pretty well here. Moving to the follow-up process, a little bit more about that. One, follow-up isn't just good so that you have a good idea of what's been closed and what hasn't. It's actually required. The Institute of Internal Auditors does require that your internal audit function does have a thorough follow-up process in place. So you are adhering to national best practices because you have us perform this for you every single year. And moving on to the next slide, wanted to make sure that you had an understanding of exactly where Volusia Schools sits today. What audits have RSM performed as your internal auditors that still have some open audit observations that management is working to remediate and we are working to test and close? You can see, we do have several reports that are in process. And I will remind you that I talked a little bit earlier about the history of change here at Volusia and some of the instability that that has created. This has absolutely contributed to, I think, the timeline of being able to close some of these audit observations. With consistent change and consistent turnover in an organization makes it very difficult for management to make progress on internal projects such as these and closing out certain risks. So I, I would not expect a report, say, designing construction, to always take five years to close. I think that's a little unusual. But talking with Dr. Balgobin and the leadership team and understanding the challenges that are in place organizationally, this is why we are here. are in place organizationally, this is why we are here, still with some open audit observations that date all the way back to 2020. I will tell you, though, the management and with Dr. Balgobin's passionate support does know that this is a priority, they absolutely do, and they are making progress. Michelle has conversations with them all the time, and they are working on remediation plans, and they are changing processes and implementing things to remediate these risks. So, I don't want you to also walk away thinking nothing's being done, that's not the case. It's just taken longer than you might have expected, but we are making progress to date. And so, Michelle and I are very hopeful that these will start to close over the next six to 12 months, and we will be more current going forward, and I'm sure management would love us to not be in their hair either. Next slide, a little bit about our IT reports. As I mentioned earlier, we also do look at your IT risks and conduct special projects in IT as well. These are issued confidentially for security reasons and under state statute. We do not issue reports that compromise your security or could accidentally give away keys to the kingdom in a public setting, so these have always been issued confidentially, but they're listed here for you to see, just so you can understand what has RSM looked at and what reports have we issued directly to your CIO and to the Audit Committee, because you do receive those. So, with that, I'll go ahead and close the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have about the internal audit function.
Any questions?
So, first of all, I want to thank you all. I know you all are very thorough, and I definitely appreciate the feedback. We currently don't have any IT projects in scope, correct?
Correct. We had some good discussion at the Audit Committee about allowing the district to focus on the implementation at this time.
ERP?
Yep.
And so, going back to the slide of things that are pending, if we can pull that back Can you pull the slide up of the things that are pending? I don't know who's presenting.
It's up on our screen, I'm not quite sure how to do that.
So, the timekeeping that is likely a part of the ERP, correct?
Yes.
Purchasing and procurement will be part of the ERP?
Yes.
Employee onboarding is part of our ERP, yes?
Yes, although I will caveat, many of these audit observations will relate to new processes that will need to be established with the new ERP, but there are some that management is able to address now. So, the ones that they are able to address, they are working on.
Okay. Student discipline, that's just the one we did last year, and then, so while there are some that are hanging out, three of the nine are, let's hold off until the ERP. Year-end tax disbursements, what is that, in layman's terms?
Sure. This relates to how the district compiles and reports the income to the IRS each year for each employee to file their annual taxes.
Is that part of the ERP as well? That's four.
Yes.
So, that's, perfect, so that's good. Then what are we pending on white fleet?
Yes, that one is the closed.
It's closed, okay.
Yes, we just closed this one.
So, arguably, one, so even the year-end tax, but it looks closed, but it clearly can't be closed because it's part of the ERP. So, that's one, two, three, so arguably, we are in a good position, because the ERP held up, you know, that implementation was huge, and so, I appreciate the concern, but at the same time, there's a lot of moving parts, and I think that what I would appreciate is, you know, one of the things that we've always had is great institutional knowledge for some folks, but not quite as many standard operating procedures that anybody can pick up a manual, learn how to do the work and work. And so, that's an area that I think is important. And so, as we are moving forward with the implementation of the ERP, that's an area that I think will be important for the stability of our district moving forward. Again, a lot of what you described in the volatility is because a lot of that was institutional, a lot of that was, you know, everybody, like you said, brings their own people, and when you depend on people and you don't have systems in place, then you have that volatility. If you have a "this is how we do it" manual, then it doesn't really matter who's there. And so, you know, that's one of the things that I found when I came into the school district into education period, is that everybody did their best. There's no doubt. Everybody did the best way they knew how, and we were doing it 72 different ways, and everybody was doing their best. And so, that's the part that I'd like to see as a Board Member, and I'm only one of five, I don't know how everybody else feels, so it's not just on what I'm saying, but to ensure that we've got these processes pen and papered, so that folks can pick that up. Thank you.
Mrs. Brosmer.
Yeah, the standard operating procedures and making sure they're, and they'll make recommendations on things that are happening that aren't documented, that they should be documented. So, that is part of what, when they choose an area, they are looking at those operating procedures and seeing that they're formalized and documented well.
Perfect. And Madam Chair, I just want to thank Stan. Stan is my representative extraordinaire, the Honorable Stan Schmidt, former School Board Member. And so, again, Stan, thank you for, I mean, your time, your volunteer your time. And so, again, thank you, thank you, thank you, because I know you understand both sides of the business, as well as you've sat here before, so thank you.
Mrs. Brosmer.
I just wanted to, me too, on Mr. Cologne's comments, there's a real value in having those systems in place, not only because leadership might change, but also in succession planning, because we may have a number of responsible positions that are maybe within a few years of retirement, and we want to make sure that we have something that can be provided to whoever is coming in behind that person. So, the creation of those processes is really valuable.
Anyone else? Okay, so, I just want to add a little bit more to this, because when that law passed and went into effect in July of 2019, we had a choice. We could have sought out hiring just an internal auditor and made them part of staff, or we could choose to go out and find a company that could offer those services. At the time, Volusia County, the Council chose to hire one single person and bring them in. We chose to put out a request for proposal to see what companies could do this task for us and what they offered. And the members that are, and Stan and Amy are both original members that were on that committee for that, we were tasked with reading, I believe it was six proposals that first year, and they ranged anywhere from 80 to 150 pages each. We had to individually read all of them, and we had to individually score all of them, and then come into a meeting where we would reveal our scores, along with the people that had submitted them, sitting there. But what I will tell you, and the process was, I mean, it was very thorough, that's why it took a little while before we got them on board to start doing this, but we ended up going with RSM, they had the highest scores, but what they offered to us is they offered people that work within their company that have the expertise for different areas. So, we weren't just getting one person that you hoped they knew something, a little something about everything. So, when we did the white fleet, we had individuals that that's what they dealt with, is auditing the white fleet. When we moved over and did discipline, which was kind of a new one for you, but they came up with the people to audit, the discipline. You know, they have the people for the financial, they have the people for the security, and why that security piece is separate is, we don't release the results of those reports to the public, because when they do these tests, they're testing to see if they can break through our security plans for our technology and things like that. So, we would never tell the public, you know, if there was a weakness that we had to correct or whatever. But what I so appreciate and about this group, though, is they, they're very responsive to us, they come in and they're honest, and they tell us, here's where we see your risks currently are. They give us an opportunity to ask a lot of questions and rank the risk, they give us guidance on it. And on this follow-up piece, what I will say is, yes, some of it does fall under the ERP, but if you also look, some of it, they're ready for testing, because when they get back to that green column, then the district has said, "We're ready for you to test that area again." So, they don't just take someone's advice, you know, they don't just listen to someone and someone says, "Oh, we checked all the boxes." They come back in and they retest that piece to verify that, yes, all of those boxes are now checked, we can close that piece, we can move on to the next part. And it's very thorough, and the reports, you've received the reports, you're going to be receiving some more, because we just had an Audit Committee meeting this past week, and you're going to also see the risk assessment they did for this year, and what, as a committee, and we actually voted unanimously as a committee to bring forward the audits we feel that they should conduct this year, at the same time while they're doing follow-up on the others. So, I want to thank them, because I really, we didn't know how it would work out, but the expertise they have in their company to address each of these areas makes me feel that we are definitely getting our money's worth, and that the information we're being given is accurate, because they're just not relying on even the three of them that oversee it. Because when you talk to the people that do that IT and cybersecurity piece, they know what they're doing, you know, and every time we meet with them, even this time, they bring in with them the individuals that just finished an area of auditing, and those individuals introduce themselves, and they tell you, "Here's my criteria, here's, you know, I have this much experience in this type of auditing and all." So, I would just say, from moving forward, you know, thinking in the future, I feel this model has probably been the best model for us to choose, and I think the committee would agree with me versus just hiring a single auditor and expecting that person to be able to, you know, do everything, so. But thank you, because you all volunteer, and without you, we couldn't do this. And I didn't know, Stan, I'll give you a moment if there's something you'd like to add, because you didn't get to speak. Is there anything you'd like to add? Because he came out today.
By the way, where's the pumpkin bread? I'm just asking.
I have to ask the RSM people about that.
I had to audit it.
One of the things that's really nice, too, about using the outside experts, because they work with other larger school districts, they can bring in knowledge of what other districts are doing. And I ask that question a lot, and I know other people do too, is like, "How are we doing? What are you seeing every place else? What about this ERP system? Have you had experience with it? What about, what was the one we were talking about the other day? There's another piece, too, and how have you seen these work together? And it kind of gives us a bit of a check that we're not going down a rat hole. I mean, these guys do a lot of work with bigger school districts, and in Florida, all the school districts are pretty good-sized, so you don't want to compare Volusia to Flagler. Nice place to live, but school districts are a lot, lot different than what we have to deal with. And so, that's one of the things I really appreciate with the model that we've chosen to go with. And everything we've seen is they're doing great jobs, they do great work, we get good feedback from them, and the committee itself is pretty dedicated to what we're doing. We put the time in, and we see what's going on, and especially, as was mentioned, when we had to do the selections for either the financial audit or the internal auditors, you will get proposals that'll be 70 to 100 pages. And for some people, if you're not really interested or not really having a background in financial accounting, they can really throw you a curveball, and you're like, "What?" There's a lot of different stuff in there. So, that's really all I have to add, I think.
Thank you. And we thank you and Amy for both coming today, because you came on your own time and volunteered to be here today for this presentation, and so, and I'll tell you, I'm happy you both serve, and I hope you continue to serve on the Audit Committee. So, if there's no other questions, thank you very much, and we will now move on to item three points. Actually, do you have an announcement you want to make? Go ahead.
I do, actually. So, in the beginning, for those of you that tuned in a little bit late, as you know, I'm filling in for Dr. Balgobin, she is actually on her way. She was attending the Daytona Beach News Journal 20th Anniversary Women in Business event, celebrating the most influential women in business. And so, with that announcement, Chair, congratulations to our very own Dr. Balgobin, because not only was she selected as one of the 30 nominees for the Women in Business Awards, but she was selected as the Public Sector Women of the Year, one of the top six winners. We're thankful to have her here, and I appreciate our partners there at RSM, when they talked about the last decade and the last five years having five different superintendents, and how that is very important for the stability of a district, to have someone for the last three years partnering in this work and making sure that things got done. So, we are very, very appreciative and honored to have Dr. Balgobin as our leader.
Yes, thank you. We are now moving on to item three points, here are one, recruit, support, retain, update.
All right, so I would like to invite Mrs. Stephanie Workman, Executive Director of Human Resources, along with Ms. Tiffany Fuller, Coordinator of Recruitment and Retention for HR, Mrs. Magrow, Specialist for the Recruitment and Retention, and Ms. Lauren Meinelt, Specialist for Wellness, to come forward and share an update on Human Resources, recruit, support, retain, and information on wellness.
That was a mouthful. Thank you for, not missing a beat. Well, good afternoon, and we're happy to be here to provide our usual fall-ish type update of where we are in the world of HR. As Dr. Vaeh mentioned, I have Coordinator Tiffany Fuller and Specialist Meg Rowe with me, as well as Lauren behind me. And today, we want to just briefly provide you an update as to where we are, but also where we're going, so that that way, we kind of have our roadmap ahead. So, with that being said, as you know, we support guardrail one, which after our students, the most important thing is our staff. So, we are here to recruit, support, develop, and retain the high-quality staff. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fuller.
Good afternoon, everyone. So, as Ms. Workman stated, with our office, when we started this work, there was a lot of conversation about how can we expand recruitment, how can we extend retention efforts? And so, the quote on the screen says, "Employee retention is not preventing people from leaving, employee retention is giving them reasons to stay." And so, when we first came to this work, we really looked at what is it that we can do to have those conversations and look at the research about what does it take to keep our employees where they are, but not just from keeping them there, but giving them a reason to stay where they're at. And so, we really looked at how we could expand that work by having conversations with industry leaders, by doing research, and then having conversations with our stakeholders here in the district, with teachers and employees, and having that conversation about what was needed and what was missing, and what were the areas that we could tighten up that support. And so, we had several points of feedback that came out of that conversation, but the two that popped up that were directly kind of in our area of impact, talked about professional learning opportunities and talked about new teacher supports. professional learning opportunities and talked about new teacher supports. So as we talk about updates to what's happening in recruitment, support, and retention, part of that update is that when I started in this office, it was recruitment and retention, and then it became recruitment, support, and retention. And so as we've looked to expand, what are those supports? You'll look at how we started this was framing, one of the shifts primarily was our support of our new teacher program. And as we speak today, you're going to see about how some of that has changed as we've come to this work and how we've gone from our TIP program to a new teacher program that has strong mentorship now that, that provides a work-life balance that you'll hear about from Lauren, that offers extensive classroom management supports, that provides models and examples to, to support the different types of persons that we're bringing to the classroom, and that provides job-embedded professional learning. So as we talk today, you'll see how some of this that we laid out, this is actually a screenshot of the presentation that we gave to Cabinet when we started to make these revisions. And so you'll see how some of that has manifested. So here's a quick snapshot of recruitment. And so this semester, kind of, we've had 29 recruitment events to date, over 700 new applicants to come in since August, since the start of school year, there's been over 166 hires. At the start of quarter two, as we ran into the start of quarter two, just about a week or so ago, we were sitting with 42 instructional vacancies. And throughout this term, we've been providing leads to all of our departments, our school sites, our school leaders and hiring managers with over 1,000 different candidate leads to help our schools and staff and principals hire and fill the vacancies that they have on their campuses. And so this is just a quick snapshot of some of the hiring events that we've had most recently. What you'll see is that we're consistently getting feedback from our stakeholders, from our, our applicant groups, and from our hiring managers about our ability to be supportive and, and meet them where their needs are and answering their questions and providing that support. And that's important for us. As we talk about recruitment and we talk about that specifically within how it focuses in our strategic plan, recruitment is, is ongoing. And, and so part of that is understanding what recruitment looks like for it to be an ongoing endeavor. And so when I talk about recruitment, I talk about it as a multi-pronged approach, right? There is ongoing recruitment. This office is never not recruiting. This office is always in a recruitment and hiring season. That has been a shift, but it's one that we've risen to. But even as we do that throughout the year, all year long, what we recruit and where our focus lies and the pool of talent that comes in varies throughout that year. And so I wanted to just kind of paint a quick snapshot of what that looks like when we're talking about immediacy and we have recruitment events and it's a, we need a job fair today, right? And that happens sometimes and we, and we do it. But when we're doing that, we bring in a lot of immediate talent, but that talent lies in different industries. And so sometimes we have to talk about, our office does recruitment for everything that hires in Volusia. And so that's, that's custodial hiring, that's teacher hiring and so forth and so on. And so as we're doing that, that's community and regional career fairs, that's support talent, that's, that's some of our talent that's coming in on our support pathways, bus drivers, attendants, custodials, paraprofessionals, schoolway cafeteria, EDEP facilitators, IT technicians. That's also where we can sometimes find some of our alt-certified teachers. We talk a lot about how recruitment, the way of I, I chose to go to school for education and then went that way, how that pathway from a collegiate standpoint has changed. And so as we look at that and we've increased the people that we're recruiting into second career teachers, right? People that have made life shifts and have come to the classroom on a different pathway. We sometimes are able to recruit these people year-round as well. But the other piece is when we're talking about building a pipeline, because sometimes you can't just hire today. Sometimes the talent's not ready tomorrow. We're constantly looking at how are we able to meet our needs immediately and how are we cultivating and building a talent pipeline that sustains us over time? And so when we talk about that, that's why we stay in touch with our colleges and universities. Their education programs have shifted. Sometimes their numbers have dropped, but they have been, they have tried to be innovative in their approaches as well. They've, they've done different things as well and we work with them. We go to their events, we go to their hiring events, we talk to their, their students, we talk to their education students and their other students. And we talk about the opportunities that are available, whether they make the choice to be in a classroom now or possibly consider it for later. And so those pathways for internships and things of that nature, those are pipeline builders. Those students that we're talking to in September at a college aren't ready to take over a classroom tomorrow, but we're talking to them to see if they graduate in December that they can come in January or come in the following spring. So we want to make sure that we have that understanding that throughout the years, those things are what we're noticing. And so a lot of our elementary education candidates fall into that pipeline build where some of our secondary and other career changers fit in some of our secondary school placement opportunities with alternative certification. In addition to our ongoing recruitment efforts that are continuously happening, we started a new application system. And so in the past three months or so, we've gone from, from zero to brand-new with a, with an application tracking system. We are now in partnership with Focus. And so we have done a lot of training and development, over 33 hours of training provided in a two-week period of time to our school, to our school leaders and, and secretaries to get them adjusted to what the new system has, as well as over 2,000 correspondence with our candidates as we're shifting from one platform to the next. As we've done that though, that has provided us with a cleaned and straightforward application. One of the points of feedback that we had previously about our application system was that it was not always clear. People weren't always sure when they were starting, when they were finishing. There, there were challenges to it that, that just didn't necessarily kind of follow a sequential order. We have a very clean streamlined application system. You start it, you hit next, you submit it, you finish it. You know when you're done, we know when you're done. It's a very clean and straightforward process. In addition to that, we have differentiated applications because the skillsets that it takes to be a schoolway cafeteria employee or a paraprofessional are different than what it takes to instruct a classroom or be a school psychologist. And so we're able to differentiate those applications so that the candidate is more informed of what they need to apply and be an eligible applicant. And simultaneously, our hiring managers are able to get a better talent pool coming into their applicant feedbacks. So that's been a really good point of feedback. And with the help of IT, who's been really, really great in their support, we have all of these as support resources. We have support resources and click sheets for current employees for how to navigate the application system. We have external click sheets for those who are not our employees and the way they navigate the system. And then we have a set of resources in V-Portal in a Focus tab so that our employees can go in and get all of those resources, including video support. And so because we are a, a strong and mighty team, we recognize that we are not the end-all, be-all as well. And so we, as part of our, our commitment to our strategic plan, we have diversified our recruitment efforts. And so this is a, a small snapshot of some of the partners that we work with. These people help us with job postings and job boards, with hiring events, with position marketing, as well as with talent pipeline and cultivation. So this is not all of them, but these are some of the ways that we partner and stretch all the ways that we recruit, particularly for, for niches, really specific industry positions that are needed across our district. As we expand recruitment pathways, we know that we have extended those pathways to some of our associate educators to begin a pathway into the teaching world. And so you've heard us talk about the Teacher-Aprentice Program in the past. And so this is just a quick snapshot that we have continued with our Teacher-Aprentice Program. And so we just wanted to kind of give you some of the feedback that we've heard. Our pathways into teaching are specifically another way that we are expanding the way that we recruit, differentiating the way that we recruit, but it's also a way that we're investing in the talent and the employees that we have to grow them professionally. And so it's a retention effort in, in those that we're supporting. And so if you look on the screen, one of our school leaders said, words cannot describe the impact that our TAP has on our students. And so you're hearing from the people that are using these services at their schools. One of the TAP candidates said, it's always been my dream to be a teacher, but life got in the way. I knew I had a passion for teaching and wanted to make more difference in students' lives. So we're really pouring into them and we're seeing the benefit as they're going through these programs. Our VATS program was our program that we started this year, specific for our ESC teacher shortage. And so we've had really good feedback from that as well. So just a quick snapshot, they just started, they're a quarter of the way in. And one of them has already said, I have found my place and love teaching. And so you can see that we're really kind of, we're cultivating what their needs are and we're growing them as they continue to work with us and continue that journey by supporting them and retaining them as our employees into other pathways. In addition to our, our VATS and our TAP pathways, we continue to expand our, our intern program. And so you can see that we still have our three pathways. Two of them are paid. This semester alone, we're working with nine colleges and universities with 38 interns in place. And so you can see the different pathways. We have our certified teacher interns, those are the ones that are taking over a classroom independently, and then our traditional interns. And then of this group, eight of those interns are in the para-to-teacher pathway. So we talked about TAP, we talked about VATS, but there's still the state-supported para-to-teacher program. And so eight of our interns presently were paras, now doing their internship, that have continued on this pathway and be ESC teachers at the, at the conclusion of their graduation. So this is a quick snapshot. This is one of our interns. She is a VCS student. As we grow our own employees, we're growing our own students. And so Brianna here was a student at DeBarry Elementary. She graduated as a UHS Titan and she is now interning back at her elementary school. And so this is how we're just showing that pathway that we're growing. And she's actually there with Ms. Haynes. This is a video that Community, Community Informations did for us, but Ms. Haynes was one of her teachers. And so she noticed Ms. Haynes at our intern orientation and said, I think you are my teacher. And so it was a really special moment. But we have 16 of our 38 interns are VCS students. And so we're continually to get that message about and get that across. There, we're pulling from other places, but we're still growing our own, even with our students. And so as we're getting ready with our ongoing recruitment efforts, we have our Fall Instructional Job Fair coming up in November. This is intentionally focused for meeting people where their needs are. We know that the middle of the year, the middle of our year, the end of the calendar year, is a time of pivot and change. And so as people are getting ready to make shifts and they're making New Year's resolutions and they're making pivots in their work-life balance, we're, we're there to capture them here and meet them at their needs and capture them for employment as well as our interns who are finishing with the December graduation date. And so everybody's tapping in to get ready to hire them for the start of the second
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Magrowa. Like they said, Specialist in the Recruitment Support and Retention Office. I oversee the New Teacher Academy. So I'm excited to share all of the things that we're doing in this world. I just want to draw your attention to the quote at the bottom of the screen. Every student deserves a great teacher, not by chance, but by design. This mantra has really become what has guided our work in this world. We wear the hat of supporting adult learners and we've tried to do the same thing through this program, differentiate our support, our expectations based on the levels that are coming to us, not only for the teachers, but also for our mentors. So one of the new pieces of the New Teacher Academy that was not included in TIPS is a mentoring program. And we got feedback through our retention huddles, like Tiffany and myself. And one of the things that New Teachers shared with us is I needed somebody to go to. So that Volusia Mentors Program is something that we incorporated into our New Teacher Academy. So you can see on the screen, like currently for this school year, we have 300-plus new instructional hires who are, who are participating in our New Teacher Academy. And for our Volusia Mentors Program, we have, in elementary, we have about 80% of our, a little less than 80% of our current mentors are in their third year of mentoring. And then at the secondary, it's about approximately 92%. So when we've asked these teacher leaders who are asked by their principals to step into this role, we've asked them for a two, a minimum of a two-year commitment because it's not that we're creating a, a person people can go to when they need it. We're creating a system that's really intentional about meeting our new teachers' needs. And so the way that we are supporting our mentors is they, everybody participates in a mentoring book study so that we're building common language and starting to build our mentoring skills through that way. And then we have a annual two-day summer mentoring academy where we come in and we hone our schools and we differentiate the support that we provide there. In addition to that, they also are attending monthly mentor meetups. And we're really building a community of mentors where we can rely and support one another, like what are the successes you're having? Where are you struggling? And we are matching the content that we deliver in those monthly mentor meetups to help support and grow our mentor expertise. Because as a reminder, our mentors are also classroom teachers, academic coaches, they're, they have their own job, they're doing mentoring with the new teachers above and beyond that. So we want to make sure we're giving them the support that we need. You can see on the next page that we, on the next slide, another area that through our retention huddles, when we talked with new teachers, that they said they needed the most help with was our classroom management. And so we have in the New Teacher Academy, two requirements for all new teachers. It's Classroom Management 101 and 102, which was developed by teacher leaders in our district who have strong classroom management expertise. And so we've expanded that and we have through our Volusia Leads Program, which is our teacher leadership program, we have a classroom management team made up of veteran teachers who support and lead these different professional learning opportunities that are delivered through our Summer Volusia Learns Institute, our New Teacher Academy Pre-Service Event, and also we do makeup sessions throughout the year that we're providing that support. In addition to that, knowing that classroom management is one of our hot topics and we consistently get feedback through our surveys from our new teachers, I just need some more support. Our mentors are telling us we need more support. We've also introduced through our Volusia Leads Group Mini Lesson Mondays. And these are 30-minute sessions that go from four thirty to five, that kind of chunk out like high-area needs, like how do I do transitions in my classroom? What does it look like for classroom routines and procedures? So we are averaging about 30 people per session on those Mini Lesson Mondays. And the feedback that we've gotten from everybody is they really appreciate the focused topic in a short amount of time and they leave with, with resources and tools that they can actually implement tomorrow. So it's been, it's been a very successful, you know, I guess, new program that, that we offer. And in addition, we also have a Classroom Management Book Studies that are led by our classroom management team. Another component of our New Teacher Academy is our Showcase Classroom, and I've shared some information on this before. This is our job-embedded professional learning and it's peer-to-peer classroom visits. So instead of coming to an after-hour session, new teachers are, have the opportunity to go into veteran teachers' classrooms and observe expert practice in practice. And then they debrief either with that teacher and/or their mentor and make a plan, what did I learn during this session and how am I implementing it into my own practice? And these, all of these conversations or these examples of professional learning opportunities that we're giving our new teachers are all then connected back to mentoring conversations that are happening monthly.
And I'd just like to add that, you know, sometimes, especially in our CTE world, we do get those very unique teachers who we do not have a role-alike in the district. So we have partnered with surrounding districts to be able to send those teachers to see a role-alike program so that they also are getting the same type of activity as our traditional teachers.
Thank you. I wanted to say one more thing about that. We really consider this one of our retention strategies as well for our office because when they're going into those veteran teachers' classrooms, you, the feedback we get from the veteran teachers, they're like, thank, I can't believe that you're recognizing me. That's people are actually coming into my room to see what I've been doing and then that, and how much they're learning both from and with the new teachers. So we've been filling buckets, you know, across the district in many different ways. And thank you, I did forget that we were doing that. They went to other districts. I'm glad you remembered. Okay. So one of the other areas that we implemented into our New Teacher Academy is called our Best Self. It's our wellness program because we really recognize, and if you are familiar with some of the research and we talk, talk about new teachers and the phases they go through, they, like right now, they're coming into that phase where they need to, they need someone to dig them out. They're like in this disillusionment phase and they're like, this is not what I thought it was going to be. So we really are trying to encourage that work-life balance. And this is another retention strategy as well because we look out into our current district and we ask veteran teachers, we find those who have some expertise in certain areas that will support new teachers. Like we have, like Jamie Monahan is someone who does sound bowls with our new teachers. We have Mr. Brennan from Deltona High School, who is really proficient in talking about stress management, time management. And so they come on board and they, they get these tips. So our Best Self is one opportunity that we provide for our new teachers to find that work-life balance, along with our Educators Thriving Program. This was brought to us by Futures through a summer, not the summer, the summer before. And we have grown this where we now have our Volusia Leads members have been trained by, facilitators have been trained by the Educators Thriving Team, who now are the trainers. who now are the trainers in our district. And we offer twelve different topics for like time management, self-management, finding that work-life balance. And we offer those in the fall, spring, and summer for our new teachers. Actually, we invite all K-12. We had a principal join this last cohort session, and I saw her at the job fair last week, and she was just raving about like just taking the time for myself through Educators Thriving, just filled her bucket. And she did it on the recommendation of a teacher who had participated earlier. Yeah. Okay. Um, our New Teacher, Teacher Leadership Pathway is a component, we're two years in the making with this. For our Volusia Leads, uh, Teacher Leadership Pathway has been in existence since twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. And so that was for veteran teachers. So we were thinking, like, how do we ensure that our new teachers feel connected and that their voice matters as a new teacher, as a year-one, as a year-two, as a year-three teacher? So what we do at the end of the, like around April-ish, we invite everybody who was a novice teacher, who was nominated for the Futures First Year Teacher of the Year Award, and also Rookie of the Month that we host through our office. Um, we invite them to join this Teacher Leadership Pathway. And what that means is when they join, they are growing their practice through a support system with veteran teachers in Volusia Leads, along with their cohorts they work with. They attend a summer, a week-long summer academy where we focus on classroom management skills, teacher clarity, ed tech, and engagement strategies. And the whole goal during this one week that they're together, um, they are creating a, we call it a teaching sprint, which is equivalent to like a DPP. So they're asking themselves, where, what do I need to improve in my practice? Out of all of these strategies that I have learned this week, what am I going to implement next year into practice? What impact do I want to see? What evidence am I going to collect to make sure that I've shown, that I've made a difference in the lives of our students? And so we have about twenty-five um, teachers who are in year two, three, or four, who are on this Teacher Leadership Pathway. And our first cohort has thirteen members who actually led this past summer's cohort. And so to see the teacher leadership skills that they have was really impressive. You all need to come next year. I will make sure it's on your calendar. As I've been mentioning, Volusia Leads is our teacher leadership group that we have in Volusia County Schools. Um, it started with, uh, from Futures brought this to us through a grant from the Consortium of Florida Educators Foundation. And we started in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Currently, we have fifty-five members. We have thirty-five elementary school teachers who are involved in this, and they represent twenty of our elementary schools. And then for both um, middle and high, we have ten members each, and they both are representing six of our, uh, six each of our middle and high schools. Our goal is to have representation for each, each of our schools. This is an invitational, so we reach out to our Teachers of the Years. We invite them, and it's their choice if they want to commit to this. Um, the folks who are, um, who are involved in this are highly involved. It is a commitment. We, we have monthly meetings, and you can see on, like, on the left-hand side with all the different colored, it says Teacher Leadership Pathways, we are providing opportunities to fill buckets, like where do your interests lie? Do you want to be leading professional learning? Are you, do you like to do um, retention huddles, like the, the Community District Liaison? Like, so we're trying to fill those buckets. Do you like to be behind the scenes and be on the tech team? So we want to find opportunities for them to share their teacher, their teacher voice and lead their colleagues in their field without leaving the classroom. That's the whole point. It is not an opportunity to go into an AP position or a principalship. It's I want to be a teacher leader, remain in my classroom, but represent my colleagues and share and grow my colleagues. On the other side, on the right-hand side, I think there are like nine things there. These are different um, professional learning activities that Volusia Leads is promoting and leading just in the fall. This, these will be replicated in the spring, and some of this will also happen in the summer. Again, retention strategy for our folks.
And as we talk about that, like those leadership pathways are part of the conversation that we have when we're out doing recruitment. When we're talking to candidates about, well, if I come in, what's going to be there to support me? These are the conversations we have. And as we meet people in different areas, there are different levels of needs and conversations. So career changers have questions about what that support will look like transitioning one career to the next. Those coming out of college have a different conversation about what ways that they can grow and expand. And that's really a conversation that we're seeing. Genera, genera, general, generation?
Generational.
Generational, that's what I wanted. Generationally, we're seeing those differences in conversations as we're recruiting those different generations that come into work at different times. Um, in addition, we also obviously have our certification support. We know that there is no teaching instruction without certification support, and so we continue to expand those pathways. And so we're seeing more and more um, people reaching out and asking for support. And then we've expanded that support beyond just our TLL supports. We have webinars at least four times a year. We offer it during um, our Volusia Learns sessions in the summer as well. And then we do a lot of one-on-one case-by-case support calls.
Uh, when, uh, when folks join Volusia Leads, we have those pathways. But we also are willing and interested in adding like new opportunities. Like what are you passionate about as a teacher leader? What are some things you want to share with your colleagues? And so we, we've introduced a few new series. And in addition, as a reminder, Tiffany's first slide, one of the things that people were saying they wanted was different professional learning opportunities, different formats. And so these, all three of these lend itself to that. So we have our Tech Talk Series that we just started this fall. And we have some teacher leaders who are focusing on Canvas and NearPod. And again, these are bite-sized, uh, thirty-minute sessions that have a specific topic. And they walk away that they can do something with that in the next day and improve their practice. And our Podcast PD is another format. It's similar to a book study. Um, but not everybody has time to go home and read a book, but they do have time to turn on a podcast as they're walking or in their car. And so we're using that. And the Teacher-to-Teacher Podcast by Dr. Carol Pelletier-Bradford is our main content for that because it offers practical wisdom, strategies, and self-care.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Lauren to come up for just a moment. And for those of you that have not met Lauren, this is Lauren Mineout. She is our Wellness Specialist, and I believe she left you all some treats in Ms. Celeste's office with the fresh pickings stand. So, Lauren?
Thank you, everybody, and I hope you enjoyed the snacks. I am the Wellness Specialist here, and I'm also a licensed mental health counselor. Um, and I'm here to update you on some of the things that I'm doing in the Wellness Department. So the focus this year, or this past year, has been on mental health. I think that's a really important initiative, to make sure that our staff feels supported with their mental health. And we're focusing on making sure that each one of those staff members feels valued, seen, and empowered with what we're doing. Um, I want to make sure that we're building a culture that is rooted in compassion and accessibility and proactive care. Um, with that in mind, I designed a new logo with one of my friends over in Community Information. And our new motto is "A Vision of Care and Support. That Way We Don't Forget: VCS." Additionally, with the new logo that we designed for Wellness and our new mission, I also had the honor of hosting a small competition for our upcoming Wellness 5K. And we had a winner, which was uh, really awesome, and her name was Emily Meyer. Um, this was an opportunity for us to bring the community together, to kind of have an opportunity to work with students, because I don't generally get to do that, as I am doing staff wellness. And I felt like it was really connected to the district's um, mission of connection.
And this is where I jump in and give a plug. If you have not registered, please register for the 5K, which will be on Sunday, November sixteenth, at Gemini Springs. It is free for all staff and very minimal for family and students.
Come on, Jamie.
You can walk, you can bike.
Can I just come and cheer?
You absolutely.
I would love that. I would love that.
Yes, the one we did last spring, we had over six hundred participants. Jessie and Ruben both were there.
Um, hello, I placed.
That's right, you did place. I forgot you ran it.
She was busy running.
Oh, yes, thank you for being there. That was awesome. Um, something else I am very excited about is I had the opportunity to work with CTE to develop a wellness tile on the V portal. Um, you know, sometimes just being one person seems like it might be tough, but not here. Um, we have such great departments that work together and have really supported me. Um, and building this wellness tile was huge for me, and I'm very passionate about the direction that we're taking in wellness in order to make sure that everybody has access. And on this wellness tile, um, I have created a wellness booking link. So people, if they're struggling with our EAP, um, potential resources, mental health resources and consultations, they can book one-on-one sessions with me so that we can walk through the steps that they need to be their best self. Um, additionally, if we need to do an extended time, because they've had a situation that maybe feels like a little bit of a crisis, we have those extended times, as well as wellness clinics that the schools can schedule. Um, and then faculty meetings. So this is something I'm, I'm really passionate about, very excited. And I hope to see that the principals are utilizing it for faculty meetings as well, so we can get the word out.
With that, that concludes our presentation. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. And yes, I will be one of the people walking, thanks to Ms. Goodrich, who has encouraged me to be part of this. She'll be running, I'll be walking. Um, I wanted to go back to slide, oh, does this slide not have it? Um, it's going back to recruitment and how we have forty-two vacancies. Um, is that instructional-only vacancies?
Oh, it's instructional.
Okay, do we have a total for total vacancies?
Not for all vacancies. I know we are sitting at roughly seventy para vacancies. I could, but I could get you the number before the end of the day.
Seventy para vacancies. And this is a random question, but I know there's a lot of job fairs and law opportunity. Are there any specifically where we are going after, since that is kind of a high number of vacancies for paras? Is there anything specifically or anywhere specifically we are going for paras? Or is it just kind of whatever falls in that category?
So there, there's layers to that. But we have a lot of people that are interested in para, the para pool, right? It's an entry-level um, position. That's like a teacher's aide position. It has a lot of people that will come in to look at the job. Couple different layers. Um, one, it requires at least an associate's degree, or you have to pass the para pro test. The para pro exam is something that we used to offer here at the district. And so when I'm hiring you as a para, if you don't have your associate's degree, you can schedule a para pro exam. Um, the owner of ETS, the owner, parent company, right, of the para pro exam, they changed the rules for how the exam's administered, which removed our ability to give that exam on-site. So now those people who don't have that, um, that, that credential to start now have to go through to ETS, it's scheduled on testing, it's another barrier in the police, right? So now we're, we're running into that just this year. Um, and so in addition to that, um, we, we do have opportunities to do that, but we're also talking to different staffing agencies, where we're able to recruit through some of their mechanisms to bring in additional talent as we're working through that change to kind of the para onboarding system.
And I just want to add about the test. Um, with the testing piece, they either have to go to a testing center to take it, which I'm sure many of us have had to do, or they can take it at home. But when you take it at home, it requires a laptop. And I don't know how many people no longer have laptops with cameras and all that kind of stuff in their home, because most people depend on their phone or a tablet or something like that. They've also increased the price of the test. It used to be fifty-five, I believe, is what they paid when they took it here on-site, and now it's eighty-five. So in, in asking someone to come in and take an entry-level position, but then before they can even start, have to pay for the test, fingerprints, drug screen, all that kind of stuff, that in itself creates barriers that we're looking for solutions to overcome, but some are just beyond even our control.
So those just presented themselves this year, so we're working through some of that.
Okay, I was gonna ask if there was any financial assistance or anything that the state would provide, or any grants that...
Not, not at this time. There, there isn't. Um, we have worked with individuals on the things that we can, like with the fingerprinting and the, and the drug screening and those things. But when that test came into play, that's completely outside of us, and they had to pay for that before they could take it.
And how, do we have any way of tracking how many number of people have turned away from that specifically because of that testing and the barriers that are there? Or do we have any way to track that?
Uh, we might be able to now in our new applicant tracking system, because we'll be able to see immediately whether or not they meet the criteria. But, but I can tell you, you know, I just had a conversation with the principal yesterday, and they're saying, well, can we change that? Because she has someone who's been working as a subpara and who would be phenomenal, but English is not her first language. Well, the test is only given in English.
Okay.
And so she's like, have they changed that? Well, that's a federal law. That's not, that's not a Volusia, that's not a Florida thing. That is part of the old, old No Child Left Behind that has hung around all these years.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thank you so much.
Hey, Mr. Cologne?
So in our old system, when you went to apply, the first thing it asked you was for your social security number. Has that changed?
No, it's still a part of the start when you're creating a new application for the very first time.
So that was the first thing it asked. Is it still the first thing?
It's not the very first thing. No, I mean it, yeah.
That, that right there was very discouraging, like we...
No, it's on, it's on page one, but it's not the very first thing that's asked.
And so that's that, um, which my understanding was part of the reason why we asked for that was for, you know, double-checking things that would be later on in the process. And so, um, that's a thought. Uh, then the other part, uh, references always holds peoples up. And so do they have a way with the new system to see if their references have verified or not? Or, because that's where people get stuck, is they don't know, and they've sent their emails. They supplied the two, three people, and they never heard back again, and it's because one of them never responded and...
Yeah, so, and there's, and, and that was still true in the previous system. But you can, when I submit my, here's my work for Principal A, B, and C, these are my references, when I submit it, while I can't see what my principal wrote back, I can see that it's submitted, it was returned, right? So I know who's responded to my inquiry to submit their, their reference request.
So they'll have the ability to see that. That's good. And then I think you answered this towards the end. So that para pro test, is that the only test and the only provider of that test in the entire country?
That is my knowledge for the provider here in this state. Um, and again, if they've got an associate's degree, because they have to have forty-eight hours. If they've got forty-eight hours of college, then they're fine. And we have a lot of people that they come through that way as well. But if they don't, this is what they have to do.
So my question is, do we have the ability and is it cost prohibitive to become a testing center?
We were until...
We were until, right, we were.
They just changed this.
They just changed it to where school districts cannot be testing centers any longer. They have to go out similar to like, uh, when our teachers go out and take their certification exams, and they have to schedule it. They have to do it like that now. They, they are treating those two tests identical in testing requirements.
But you did say there was a Proctor ability, and so can we set up a testing center here that has the computers?
We cannot. It cannot be, the, the school district cannot be involved at all in the testing process, the way we understand it.
So they can take the Proctor test at home, but they can't do it here?
Correct, because they, there is a Proctor on the other end that watches them. They, they, um, they register on their own. They don't associate it with a school district. They don't do anything. It's, it's no different than if you're in a college class and your professor was, was watching you specifically test.
Right, but you could go to the library and do your test while you're there and be watched and proctored.
Honestly, we don't, since we have been removed from the process, we don't know what options they're given for that. But we just know that Volusia County Schools cannot be tied to the process.
I would question whether or not we could provide a room with computers where they could do that so that that's not an obstacle.
And that's what we did before. We actually had a room in, um...
Right, but they would be...
In HR.
But they weren't being proctored in HR.
Yes, they were.
Yes, they were.
Yes, they were. We proctored them. I had, I had one employee, that that was part of their job, is if someone needed to schedule that test, they would call, they would schedule it, they'd pay their money, and that person would sit there and proctor while they were testing.
So you mentioned the laptop. That's why I'm saying it would be individual to the process. They would still register, they'd do everything like they do today.
We can look into it. I'm, I'm not opposed to anything you suggest.
And I'm not saying, at that point, we wouldn't even be proctoring them. They would be proctored by whoever's there, but at least we would have a computer with a camera that they could take their test and come and, you know, for those who don't have it. And I, again, sometimes even laptop cameras are not good enough, because they don't provide enough of a...
A wide enough lens.
At least I've taken lots of tests recently, and so I, you know, and of course, it always depends on the proctor. So maybe having that space would be a plus.
We can research it and see if we can do it that way. If they take care of everything and we're just providing them the equipment and the space, I'm not opposed to it.
That may be able to close that gap. Uh, and I want to appreciate what you said about back there. What you said about generations, because right now, we probably have four different generations in our school district. And when you think about those generations, something as subtle as communication, which there's nothing subtle about communication. You know, you have one person who... You know, you have one person who loves the handwritten note, and you have the next person who says, "Why'd you bother writing this? You know, you could've sent me a text." Two extremes. And so finding the ability to teach adult learners across four generations is quite the challenge, and so thank you for acknowledging that, because that is something that a lot of businesses don't get right. They think that there's only one way to do it, there's only one way to, you know, even telling someone, "I'm gonna schedule a meeting." Well, in some instances, you know, some folks won't sleep for days if they have a meeting scheduled, other folks sleep just fine, and they're like, "Whatever." And so, again, that's generational. And so I want to thank you for that, because that's a huge component of this, so thank you.
Ms. Goodrich?
So the test for the paras, it's a state requirement that they take this test?
It's federal.
Federal requirement, and the federal government only allows this one company, I'm with you, in Georgia, in Florida?
So the requirement is that they have to have 48 hours of college?
Right, got that part, but if they don't...
Right, so if they don't, then they have to pass the para pro exam. The ETS is the system that I know in the state of Florida that provides the test that we're sanctioned to give.
Correct. And I'm gonna agree with you, Mr. Cologne, if you can take it at your laptop at Starbucks, why can't you take it here? I think we need, I do think we need to look into that further, and it maybe, it sounds like it's valid, but maybe we need to reach out to that company and push that issue, because that's, if that's what's holding us up from getting para pros, there's an easy, easy fix for that. So I'm just gonna back up what you said, you said it before I got to.
Anyone else? I'm just still thankful that when this entire piece started, because our paras used to not have to have an associate's degree or 48 college credit hours, we were able to hire them even with a high school diploma for those positions. And then when this came about, they granted us the ability to grandfather a small group that had been in there for a while, but everybody else, at that point, they gave us the para protest. And what they told us even then was, we weren't gonna have the para pro test for a long period of time. It was just gonna be like a gap, so that people could get their degree. The fact that we've been able to keep the test is a blessing, because it meant everybody didn't have to go and get 48 college credit hours to be a para professional. And we were a testing site for, I think from the time we started it. And so I'm disappointed to hear that they took that ability away from us. I'd like to see if there's something that we can do, but somewhere along the line, somebody made a decision that, to take the school system out of that being a site. And it is a barrier. I mean, if we look at the individuals that are applying for these jobs, if they, you know, have the high school diploma, but do not have yet the 48 hours or the associate's degree, they are already, if they, a lot of them want to earn that degree, but they don't have the money to do it. And so now we've put another barrier, and you add the fingerprinting and the drug testing and all that, that's a lot of upfront money to be able to then take a position to work in our schools, so...
And I will tell you, one thing that we do offer, even now without offering the test itself, is we do have a Canvas course that is free to anybody who needs it to try to help them with studying, because I will tell you, math is, just like with most of our elementary ed tests, the math is the hardest part. So that is something that we share with any applicant who says, "I need assistance."
Thank you for continuing to do that. If there's other questions, then we are going to take a short break. It is 2:58, and we will be back in here at 3:10 for the next group, which is the elementary vape.
It was a nice one.
Oh, sorry.
Chair, you ready?
Okay, welcome back. It is now 3:14 and we are moving on to item 4.01, the elementary vape program. Dr. Baugabin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you can see, we already have our Executive Director for Graduation Assurance and Student Services, Mr. Mike McAliff, along with Ms. Jessica McIntyre, our Coordinator for Mental Health Student Services. They will be sharing with you a presentation that we have regarding vape. As you know, we've instituted vape, the vape program in our secondary, but we also have implemented that program at the elementary level this year. So the team will give you an update, not just on how we're doing at a secondary level since it's been implemented, but also how it's coming along at the elementary level in our fourth and fifth grade. So, Mr. McAliff, go for it.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Baugabin. As Dr. Baugabin stated, yes, this is a course with the elementary division that we've created to kind of mirror our vape program that we had six through 12. This is for grades four through five. And we're also going to cover something new that we started with our mental health students, which is called My Words, My Power, which is a K-2, three through five educational initiative. And we'll tell you the reasoning behind that, where that came from. This policy aligns with Student Code of Conduct and Discipline for Policy 208E. We are going to provide conditions to enhance student learning. And all these courses that you guys are going to see today are self-guided Canvas courses that work at their own pace with the students. So why did we get this? We were seeing a rising concern with elementary students being caught with vapes, with fourth and fifth grade students primarily. It's a concern, I think, when you have one or two in that level of age, it should be a concern. So we had to look at kind of our outcomes and things that we were doing, and how can we change this, the outcome of it? And we looked at some of our processes. We were just suspending kids. We weren't trying to educate them. We weren't trying to do anything out of the norm to change that behavior because they're picking up this from either older siblings, brothers, family members, or things like that. So we looked at our processes and we had to decide what we were going to do. So we mirrored the same approach that we took, and you guys will see later, with our vape course, and it's for fourth and fifth grade students. And it will pretty much go over that whole educating first, holding the kids accountable, and also bringing awareness to them of what actually takes place and what this can do to their body as well. So this is about personal responsibilities that these students choose. Jessica is going to talk to you guys about the K through two, three through five, My Words, My Power, which is all about school threats. And when a student makes a threat towards school, I don't know if you remember last year, we wanted to be very consistent across the board with all of the schools, K through 12. If a student was making a threat on the playground at kindergarten or first that he was going to kill or shoot somebody, we would be putting that student up for DSBC, which is our District Placement Committee, and they would decide the outcome of it. So we saw a huge amount of that, and we saw a huge amount of students being put up for that at times. So we knew this year we had to change something going into it. So she's going to talk about the educational process of where we're at with that, and why we developed this, and where we're at here. So it's a two-program approach. You guys will see vape is Volusia Assistance and Prevention. Education is for fourth and fifth graders, as I stated prior. This is all about understanding the devices. And then the Threat and Wellness Program is K through two, three through five. And Jessica will get into that a little bit, about students who have made threats or demonstrating concerning behaviors for safety. The vape program and overview, it's similar to the secondary level, but not extensive. This one's only six courses to where there's 11 with the six through 12. So like I said, we wanted to still hold the kids accountable, but also make sure that we're bringing awareness to them while we're educating them as first. So students learn about the harmful ingredients of vapes. They develop healthy coping strategies, commit commitment to vape-free choices, understand health, academic, and social legal consequences, and then the school rules, of course, will follow with the law. This course is for any student, fourth or fifth, who gets caught with a vape, just so you guys are aware. We've had about 21 to date for this school year. So that just kind of shows you where we're at with that, with fourth and fifth graders. So we have 21 of those students that have been caught with that, and they are given the option to go into this vape program, which is, they have nine weeks to complete it, but they don't need that long. But the parent has to provide permission, and if the parent does not give consent, then the student goes up to DSBC, which is our District Placement Committee, and will normally be off-campus instruction or go to an alternative site for 45 days. And the reason why we do that piece is because, like we said, we're trying to educate and bring awareness to the student and the family, to change the outcomes of what we've been seeing. They have nine weeks to complete it. It's got to be an 80% or higher, and any incomplete work may result in additional consequences if they choose not to do it within that timeframe. So here are the components of what you guys will see, the modules. The module one is what really is a vape, and it goes into what they have to do with it. Like I said, it's not as extensive as the six through 12, but this is kind of just scratching the surface to bring that awareness piece with it. Module two is vaping addictive, and then module three is what vaping does to the body. You will see they have a reading, they have a video, and then they have a mixed format of quizzes that they normally have to take and score an 80% or higher on those. It also continues with rules and consequences and smart choices, and then concludes with final checks of doing a vape-free pledge that they will honor hopefully and not make the same choice again. So this gets us now into our elementary wellness program. So we took the same identical format that we were doing with Canvas courses, with vape, six through 12, and now four through five. And then what we wanted to do is, we were actually tasked by the board to see if we could come up with something different instead of putting these kids up for expulsion. And Dr. B tasked us with that, saying, "Make it happen." So we got to work this summer, and this is what we were able to come up with. Yes. So we were able to do this, and it's a good thing. Jessica will get into the nuts and bolts of everything about the Threat and Wellness program, but it's a good little thing of what we're seeing because, yes, it's minor of what we would say growing up, but the day and age we live in now and the world we live in, things have changed. So, you know, this is where we're at, and this is where our new approach with it. So Jess, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. So this elementary Threat and Wellness program is really embedded within the broader district efforts to support students and wellness. So as Mr. McAliff said, these goals are really to help students understand the words and the impact of their words and their actions. We want to teach strategies for making safe, responsible, positive choices, taking those responsibilities for the decisions that they do make, developing that emotional regulation, expression skills, and overall working to foster that culture of kindness and respect. So very much again, like the vape program, we have our participation criteria. So this is for first-time offenses, for those students who maybe have had possession of toy guns, knives at school, making malicious threats of violence, threats of harm to the school or the community. Again, we must have that parental consent, or they might be put up for the OHI or DSBC for Alt.Ed. For this program, however, instead of nine weeks, it must be completed within two weeks, again, requiring that passing grade of 80% or higher and that failure to complete. I can say that currently in K through second, 24 students have been enrolled and 10 have completed that. And in grades three through five, 30 students have been enrolled with 16 having completed. What's interesting, though, is I will share that second grade and fifth grade have been our highest for the enrollment. And it's just interesting because it's such a key developmental time with social peers deciding kind of your own kind of ways of thinking, that development is so key in those two ages. So it is very interesting that those are our two highest points there. So to go over the basic curriculum guide, K through second goes through what is a threat, age-appropriate explanation of what is a threat using simple language, why threats are harmful, why they make people feel bad. We have stories in there for the students to read and answer questions, and some interactive activities. We want to talk about tattling versus telling. What's the difference? Teaching them how to report those concerns of behavior that we do need to look at. The impact of bullying, this is definitely something also that we wanted to bring into this education, simple explanations, impacts, effects that it has. Helping them talk about their feelings, identifying their emotions and feelings. We have a couple activities for them to kind of gauge, when I do get upset, perhaps on a thermometer, where do I land? Why do I feel this way? And then also choosing kindness. And with both of these, also with the three through five, we also have several safety pledges for them to do as well. Very similar, third through fifth, what is a threat, except here we're going into more detailed explanations of various types of threats, why they, again, are harmful, looking at the psychological, social impacts of that threatening behavior. Again, what do you do if you hear a threat? We always talk about fortify Florida, see something, say something, giving them ideas of who is responsible, who can they go and talk to, who are those safe people on campus or at home, why it's important to express those feelings, again, the intensity, the strength of different emotions, and why they might react the way they do. Again, choosing kindness, building that culture, and promises to make safe choices. So the implementation process, again, for vape and the Threat and Wellness, is really looking at that early identification. We want to be able to track student safety. We want to be able to analyze some of these trends. We want to be able to ensure transparency with our families by, again, having them be a part of that decision-making of do or do I not want my child to participate in this program, knowing what the other options are to be a part of that. And that's also empowering them to participate more with what we are doing at the schools. So traditional versus educational. So the traditional disciplinary actions are often removing students from schools, from their learning environments, sometimes failing to address the root causes of these behaviors. And that's not providing any of those supports. And again, it might stigmatize some of our students from coming forward and maybe continuing on some of these negative patterns that they're showing. So we want to do a strategic shift in our district philosophy, emphasizing the importance of those educational interventions. That's a broader strategy to support student wellness and hopefully reduce or eliminate those repeat offenses.
And I'm going to do a little bit of a plug real quick that I added this. It's some dual enrollment numbers that just came out last week, so I thought I'd share with you, so I don't have to come back up here and do another workshop. So we're adding it to the end of this, but this is just an overall enrollment status of where we're at with dual enrollment for all of our students that are currently dual-enrolled, six through 12 with it. And you can see that we're steadily increasing the fall of 2025, that we had 1,729 students, and last year we had 1,567 students. This is kind of just a breakdown of where students sit and how many students that we have in these courses on our campuses. So every high school offers SLS 1122, which is the entry-level student success course for Daytona State. They have to take that course first. So you can see the numbers here that are broken down and where we sit, kind of as a whole from the district. And you can see individual schools as well. There are some middle schools that have identified students who are over the age of 14 that have passed the PERC score that are also able to do this. Those students are doing those online at the middle school, just so you guys are aware. Our success rate of a C or better, they have to have that to earn the credit, within our dual enrollment courses, you can see as a district overall, we're at 94% of students that are enrolled into those courses, SLS 1122 and 2301. They have a 94% with a C or higher pass rate, which is up for the last two years as well. And then just some vocational enrollment numbers that you can see, they're not huge, but they're moving in the right direction slowly but surely because it takes that identified student of who we want and what they are actually interested in going that trade route instead of the traditional college or service route. So you can see where we're at. We're at 23 students that are actually vocationally enrolled with Daytona State currently, up 17 from last year, and then 16 in the 2023 year. And here's the number by students, just so you guys can see by school, of where it's broken down as well. And then this is just some good news with our graduates that we got from Daytona State, just so you guys are aware. We had 131 students graduate with their AA degree last year, which is awesome. Two students associate of science. We had 11 with their vocational certificate, and we had no with a bachelor's degree, but we did have 144 total receive their AA diploma prior to graduation. And 109 of those students completed that with honors as well. So, questions?
Thank you. I wanted to thank you guys and your team for putting together the vape course for elementary. I know it's sad that we have to go there, but I am glad they have that because I feel like if we do reach those students at a younger age, we won't have to deal with this in high school, and they'll be better off for it. I also really, really appreciate the My Words, My Power because I know we all see the issues that happen. And I feel like sometimes kids say things that maybe they've overheard on video games, movies, TV, maybe other older people, and they don't really know what they're saying. They don't know the impact. So thank you guys so much for doing that. My questions are, I'm guessing all this has been distributed to all the elementary school counselors, principals, everyone's already seen this?
Yeah, everyone's on board.
Perfect. And so also, is this for just the first time only, and then afterwards it's traditional discipline?
Yes, it would be. It would follow our discipline matrix.
All right. Thank you. That's it.
Anyone else? I want to thank you. It is sad that we've had to take a vaping program to elementary school, but, you know, it started showing up two years ago that the vapes were there. But I do want to say I also thank you because I really think the whole part of my words is very important because I think sometimes the most complaints we get is like the bullying piece. And I also think they need to understand the difference between just they disagree on something versus what bullying actually looks like. So thank you today, and I do like the update on the dual enrollment because both of my children did dual enrollment, and it's a wonderful way to start off.
Agreed.
Thank you.
No, I like to mention, because even though Captain is now sitting with the team here, Captain was actually invited last week to speak regarding Volusia County Schools to the Lieutenant Governor, and did a phenomenal presentation. So I want to thank you, Captain, because you're part of Student Services. To Mr. McAliff and Ms. McIntyre, you know, for those of us who understand the back history here of Volusia County, the back history, present where we are, and the vision for the future, I think it's an understatement to say of the incredible work that you and your team are spearheading in this division. You know, I have to applaud our Commissioner of Education because he made a very bold and valid statement. We are in public education, and as adults, we know that our children are exposed on a daily basis to examples, good examples, and also to non-examples. That's how life is, and that's how our community, you know, those are the realities. One of the things that we do know for sure, that it's imperative for us in public education, those of us who are adults, and especially, especially in leadership positions where we have the opportunity to shape lives, that we always become the role model for our students. And I have to applaud our Commissioner of Education because in a very recent meeting that we had with him, he made it very clear. He said his expectation is that everyone who serves in public education is a role model for children. So the work that we're doing, it's pretty incredible, but we have to live that work, us adults, all of us, every single day, because children will always remember what they see even more so than what they're being told. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are now moving on to item 5.01, Career and Technical Education Update. Dr. Baugabin?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm very excited to call this team also. Dr. Dreighton and Dr. Pierce, and I think Dr. Pierce, if you will come up. Dr. Tamira Baker-Dreighton is our Executive Director for Secondary Schools. Dr. Kristen Pierce is our Coordinator for Career and Technical Education. She's coming up with some of her team members that she will introduce. Again, you're going to find that they are going to share with you a presentation of what's been happening and what is coming our way for students here in Volusia County. Again, this is another team that has been doing pretty, pretty incredible and remarkable work, leading the work of CTE in the state of Florida. So thank you, Dr. Pierce, and
Thank you. I have an AV specialist here. She's going to come up and be my clicker. Well, good afternoon, Chair. Haines, School Board members, Dr. Baugabin, I'm Kristen Pierce, the CTE Coordinator, and I'm pleased today to do an update for Career and Technical Education, to share with you how we're growing, how we're innovating, and how we are incorporating our programs into the needs of the workforce. So CTE supports our district strategic plan by expanding opportunities for high-scale, high-wage careers, enhancing learning environments, and building strong connections with community and industry partners. Our mission and vision really come down to this, skills build futures. That's why we're here. Every program, every partnership, every certification, it's about students walking across the graduation stage ready for both college and careers. CTE growth is focused on giving more, students more access to accelerated credits, industry credentials, and work-based learning opportunities like internships. You all have seen a rendition of this slide before. I update it yearly, but it really does give a well-rounded, at a glance, of the numbers of the different programs that we offer. of the different programs that that we offer. Through the partnerships, we're also making sure every student can graduate and can move into the next chapter with confidence. Our growth in programs and academies and pathways and certifications isn't happening by chance, it's very intentional. A recent report by Lightcast confirms why this matters. Florida, for the third year in a row, is ranked number one in the nation for workforce talent. And that really, I think our governor with our different workforce grants, I think that really has transitioned to workforce education. This means that the programs we're building aren't just keeping pace, we're aligning directly with what the data shows and where the talent is needed most. Our career academies represent a commitment from both schools and from our business partners. Academies are four-year programs of study that make learning meaningful by linking rigorous academics with hands-on, career-focused experiences and ensuring that they have work-based learning opportunities out in the community. These are, oops, it's okay. Every year for the last three years, we've added one academy at each school. We're actually up to 46. So that's impressive. You know, we're working hard with our facilitators and school-based personnel to ensure that our evaluation systems represent that rigor and that relevance. So let's talk about a little bit about strategic focus and what it is that Career and Technical Education is doing and where we're going. We know that innovation is reshaping industry and the labor market and workforce education must evolve to meet and to anticipate those future job growth. Sustaining industry alignment is essential. Maintaining modern labs and equipment with a partnership with our facilities is important and adding certifications that reflect current standards is important. Additionally, other strategic focus areas, pathways, recruitment, training, and engagement are areas that we're focused on. We want to make sure that we're all about expanding access for our students. Innovation opens doors to new programs, but we also need to ensure that our students know what their choices are, that our teachers are supported, and that our partnerships are in place to ensure that students have those opportunities. These strategies make sure opportunities reach our students. I want to talk about program planning and implementation. Our goal is simple. We want to give students choices that matter by aligning programs to both student interest and also to local job growth, looking at the occupational demand list locally, talking with our business partners to identify areas where they're trying to find employees and can't. We make sure that our pathways are relevant, forward-looking, and grounded in opportunity. We're also focused on high-scale, high-wage programs. Some of the new programs that are coming our year away are artificial intelligence. We're looking to add those at Seabreeze, New Smyrna, and Pine Ridge. Know that those are all in the works at this point. Definitely looking at aviation maintenance at Atlantic High School and working to add that based on our cap grant from last year, the $3 million we got for engineering and aerospace, cosmetology, potentially mainland and Deltona High School, and plumbing. The university high school will be the last school that we want to add a trades program. Every other school has a trades program. We've added one every year, at least one for the last four, five years, actually. So some other thoughts are sometimes we also have to do career cluster realignment. So when you're looking at the workforce and looking what the job opportunities are out there, we may need to restructure some of the programs. Sunset programs, offer new programs. We call that career cluster alignment. We're looking at additionally adding to our agriculture program, ag sales and services. Entrepreneurship is incredibly important and every single career area entrepreneurial thinking is is definitely something that our employers are looking for with that innovation. We're looking at natural resources, incorporating some of that water reclamation and floodwater type technologies that some of our cities are grappling with this time and also looking to add a nursing assisting program to the east side of the county. Talk a little bit about entrepreneurship and how we're advancing entrepreneurship. Entrepreneurship is definitely the engine of innovation and teaching resilience. It teaches resilience, adaptability, problem solving, and that every employer values, and it's thriving locally. You know that we have over 12,000 small businesses in Volusia County. Many of those are entrepreneurial businesses. So we need to make sure that we are empowering our students to be builders of opportunity, not just seekers of opportunity. CTE continues to expand our entrepreneurial opportunities, as you can see on this slide, and connects classroom learning to real-world business creation and community growth. We've added, expanded entrepreneurial curriculum to agriculture, business, building construction, early childhood education. All of those different programs offer students an opportunity to run or own their own businesses. So understanding those entrepreneurial concepts, very important. Vince is our, Vince Rochink is the one who works with the Entrepreneurial Speaker Series at DSC and also runs our Nifty Pitch Competition. So he's working hard to to make sure that those programs are offered now at all high schools and also looking to bring that into our middle schools with that curriculum. We also have to make sure that our industry certifications are aligned to our programs and to our local workforce. Certifications are proof of readiness and a key measure for college and career acceleration. So by embedding these industry certification test standards into our curriculum maps and pacing guides, we ensure that instruction is aligned with those workforce expectations. I could tell you that with over 200 CTE courses and 126 industry certifications, I feel like this is going to be something that we'll be working on indefinitely. We also have to look at acquiring seed and sustainability funding. My team has worked really hard to ensure that we are writing for grants and we know that innovation does require investment. So through these grants, we're not only renovating facilities and building pre-apprenticeship pathways, we're launching some of those bold new programs and expanding the programs that give students a competitive edge. You can see over the last four years how we have built that seed and sustainability funding through workforce and pathways grant opportunities. This year, we're looking at potentially bringing in $7 million that we put right back into the classrooms and into those programs and the students. Talk about innovation in action. So looking at the different funding opportunities and how we are spending the money, we really do look at the programs and make sure that they're aligned to the workforce. So you can see that our investment last, this is just last year. It's not random. We're definitely trying to align it to those high-scale, high-wage occupations in Volusia County, aerospace trades, IT, agriculture. So by investing here, we're making sure students are prepared to step into the very jobs driving Volusia's economy. So excitingly, I think Dr. B sent an email recently, but we did get awarded another cap grant this year. This one's for $2 million and it's to modernize all of our health science programs and academies. What we really want to do is make those look like mirror clinical labs. So it's going to look like the, you know, a patient care room. There are going to be nursing stations. So we're really excited. We're working with vendors, we're working with our partner Advent Health to help determine what those programs are going to look like and to develop those different floor plans. So to be continued. That's going to be a three-year modernization. Again, looking at our facilities, we are so incredibly thankful for the VCS Facilities Department. Ms. Patty Corr, thank you so much to your team. I can't tell you a time when that team has not been available to help CTE, whether it's at the ag farm or it's something happening in a construction lab. They are always available and ready and willing to help make sure that our labs are up to standard. So when you step into one of our CTE labs, it really doesn't feel like a classroom, hence the new welding lab that everybody got to see a few weeks ago at that grand opening. It feels like the workplace and that's what we want it to look like. We want it to look like and feel like and we want teachers to look and work with students in the way that this is actually a workplace program. So from flight simulators to welding stations to patient mannequins, students are practicing on the same tools that they're actually going to use within their different careers. I did a little checking on wages locally for some of those high-scale, high-wage occupations and areas that we're expanding that I just spoke about. And these wages show what our return on investment is for our different programs. So if you're looking at the engineering and aerospace cluster, which is represented on this slide, these are entry-level positions that a student who comes out of our high schools, completing one of our aerospace or engineering programs with an industry certification can step right into these occupations. So I'm pretty impressed with the salaries that those students can earn right out of high school. Take a look at one of the other areas that is growing in not only in Florida but nationally is those construction trades and manufacturing with the aging out of some of those workers. And it is the backbone of our economy as well. So we're continuing to grow those opportunities. And again, you can see in constructions, skilled trades, and manufacturing, the different occupations that students can walk right into after earning one of or more of our industry certifications. Even in entry-level roles, you can see that students can earn a sustainable wage right out of high school. Another area that is fast-growing, health care and IT, two of our fastest growing in this area, but also nationally. Salaries speak for themselves. The one that's pretty impressive is the one, if you look down at IT, there's one that they can make $65,000 to $86,000 a year right out of high school as a cybersecurity analyst. We're also adding cybersecurity programs. By the way, we have two, but we're looking to expand those as well. So raising the awareness that CTE pathways can really do provide students those opportunities right out of high school is is one of the other areas that we're working to make sure that students and parents in the community understand that that's what we're doing with our programs. Moving into career pathways then. The focus on pathways is on building those clear connections so students understand their options, see the road ahead, and they recognize the opportunities that are available to them. We need to raise awareness of CTE pathways because it helps families see how early choices can connect to future opportunities. So we are aligning additional programs at middle school that will connect directly to our high school programs and academies. And of course, we always look at those seamless pathways from high school to post-secondary if students choose to move in that direction. And we are, our emphasis this year is on marketing and recruitment in the middle school and ensuring that students understand those opportunities and that they're able to move right into those areas. So currently, we have 67 middle to high school career pathways that help students develop their direction and explore and prepare for future careers. By introducing CTE career exploration in middle school, we help students discover their interests earlier and make intentional choices. But you need to know that we haven't stopped there. We're also looking at adding STEM programs at elementary school, our first one at Stark. And there are discussions to do additional site development to build that early curiosity and foundational skills for innovation and moving into those programs at middle and high school. So we're excited about that. CTE is excited to partner with STEM and the elementary team to help do that. Talking about expanding career pathways from high school to post-secondary, partnership with Daytona State College is super important to Volusia County Schools. We have an amazing partnership with that post-secondary institution and helps provide those seamless pathways to post-secondary education. So we're trying to align our programs with the career certificate and technical programs at middle, at, I'm sorry, at high school to post-secondary where it helps students save time, reduce costs, and they graduate with that competitive edge. So my team works tirelessly with with Daytona State College to add those opportunities to all of our articulation agreements yearly. We're also expanding career pathways in our aerospace and engineering area. So Emory Riddle, another strong partner for Volusia County Schools. We do have multiple dual enrollment courses on Atlantic High School's campus currently, and we are building, Deland High School's aerospace program will be offering those as well. From pilot training to unmanned aircraft systems, these experiences really do set students apart in college and when they move into the workforce. I mentioned a minute ago a little bit about strengthening our marketing and recruitment. I've got one of my team members whose role this year is to work directly with our middle school counselors, with our teachers, and is building a cadre of professionals to help us look at how we can make those connections more intentional, getting into the middle schools, luncheon learns, working with Mr. Millholland and the social studies team to get into UZELLO and to provide them that information about the opportunities in CTE. We want our students to understand and our families to understand that full range of opportunities that that our students have so that by the time students reach high school, they already know where their options are and they're ready to take advantage of those pathways that we've built. So you can see some of the things that we'll be doing here in middle school to help to help make sure that we've got that emphasis. We're also, of course, looking at digital media and looking at marketing and partnering with community information and developing videos. We know that stories inspire and we want to make sure that through our alumni spotlights, our student-led content, and our new Skills Build Futures video campaign that we're showing how classroom skills translate into careers. I learned this skill in my course. Now, how does that translate to an occupation? And then having a business partner share with us what that means when that that student will come actually become an employee there. So I do think I've got a video. I think we got that squared away. Or do I have one more slide? Nope, no video. Okay. Yes? So this is the Learn Here, Earn Here video. Shows you what students engaged in hands-on internships because in Volusia, we want to grow our own.
PKs we have with the program through four to five-year-olds. It's mostly an interaction thing, so we get to know them one-on-one, know them in groups, in a bigger group, we read to them, have different activities every day, and just get to know them more.
Teal Academy provides an exceptional opportunity for our Teal seniors. They get to choose to spend their internship in our VP K program here at Atlantic High School or with South Daytona Elementary, one of our local elementary schools. Also, another benefit to the student internship program here with Teal Academy is our district provides them letter of intent to hire. So after graduation, they can go and get their degree and come back and they have a guaranteed job here in Volusia County.
This has really given me the experience of how being a teacher would be, especially for the younger ones, and how to deal with difficult and not so difficult situations. Yes, we have our good days and our bad days, but we also know how to like turn them around and make them all good at the end.
Like the classroom experience was very helpful for me, learning all the classroom management, teacher support, emotional student support, everything that goes along with being a teacher. It helped me learn how to deal with situations hands-on versus ways that they say in the books. It shows you that there's a lot of experimenting into teaching and that you have to like experiment the little different methods between the students. It's taught me a lot and definitely solidified my decision on wanting to be a teacher.
Our student interns are fully immersed. I feel like there's nothing that can prepare them for the real-world classroom environment than just being right there in it. They're learning how to collaborate, teamwork, all the great things that the internship provides.
There is another video that I was going to show, but I can see there in the essence of time, we'll, I'll move on and then I can show one other. I don't want to go over my time. Or do you want to see it? Okay, so this one is a glow-up video and it features one of our, this is a draft. I want you to know that this is raw video, but I just wanted to share with you that we are looking for those graduates who went out into the field after they actually finished a CTE program. So this is Ariana.
Hi, my name is Ariana Towns and I studied at the Pre-Health Academy at Pine Ridge High School and I'm currently a PA student at Advent Health University. So I'm currently a physician assistant student at Advent Health University and I am currently in my clinical rotations on the last month of my clinical year. And I'm currently in thoracic surgery, which is what I would like to do in the future. And I'm excited to go into the workforce and work as a physician assistant in the central Florida area. So the CTE program at Pine Ridge High School was pre-health and at the time, the biggest part of the Pre-Health Academy that helped me moving forward into my career was the volunteerism that I performed at Advent Health Fish Memorial Hospital in Deltona, Florida. I volunteered there and that really helped me figure out the path that I would like to go down. I was able to volunteer at nursing facilities as well as laboratory I was able to volunteer at nursing facilities as well as laboratory sciences, and I ultimately decided to consider going the physician assistant route using the experience that I gathered from that CTE program and the volunteer. So, regarding advice moving forward, anybody who is starting high school and considering joining a pre-health academy or a biomedical sciences academy, I definitely suggest it and continue moving forward with it because it'll help you really navigate your passions and decide if you really would like a career in healthcare. And for me, it really did. And it helps you, gives you the opportunity to volunteer, to learn anatomy and physiology, and to really explore those paths. And for me especially, the CNA program offered through Pine Ridge High School helped me gain hours that were helpful to applying to the physician assistant program.
Just want to remind, this is, has not been refined. This is raw video, so we're going to go back and rework it. But I wanted you guys to see that we are working on that glow-up and finding those students that we can share with other students, how it gives them that advantage when they finish that CTE program and earn the industry certification. So, share a little bit more about some of the other areas of growth and some of our focuses this year. We are really looking on, at new teacher support. And I think that Ms. Workman mentioned CTE teachers and how they, they are a unicorn out there. Sometimes it's difficult to find that technical skill, so we want to make sure that we keep them and retain them. And I did look at three years' worth of data, and we went from a fifty-four percent retention rate for new teachers to last year, up to eighty-eight percent. So, we are looking this year to improve that. We want to keep all of our teachers. So, looking at new teacher action plans, our facilitators work specifically with our specialists and our teachers, getting a Ready, Set, Teach new training series for them to understand what is CTE, what is an industry certification, how do you use it in your classroom? Because remember, a lot of those are second-career educators. They came from the workforce and they are in district certified based on their technical Also looking to elevate community engagement. This one is exciting. My department has really been invested in this the last couple of years, but last couple of months, but Dr. Balbegan had launched this last year, leading us to really take charge of that community engagement component, make sure that we're not just going to events, but we are collaborating with business partners, we're bringing back information, we're seeing how those partners can connect in our schools. And then we're looking at that data and making data-driven decisions about where it is we need to go, what other events we need to go to. So, our goal really is to create those lasting partnerships that support student success and to make sure that our communities are involved in our schools. And the only way for us to do that is to get out there and share, share that word. So, our action steps were to build an event master list, which many of the school board members have seen, and developing a unified calendar. We meet weekly to review that calendar and determine what are our actions this week, and then creating an accountability, accountability log. Anytime anyone goes to an event, they come back and actually add content to that log, which we review. And then again, the weekly meetings and providing summaries monthly for the superintendent and senior staff so they can see what it is we're doing out there in the community. So, we are really involved in that. The other piece of that is, is the business partners did weigh in. Like, what is it that we want to share about Volusia County schools in the community? And who better to ask that question to than our business partners? So, out of those different interviews that we had with business partners, three speaking goals came out of that. And that is connect students with community, but also connect the community with the schools so that it is a two-way street. It's not just a one-way street. That we need to help the community see that we also need them in our schools, we also need those work-based experiences, and then to share the many roads of student success. And that means that there isn't just one way to graduate from high school. There are multiple programs, there are many different opportunities depending on what your passions and your interests are and the assistance that you need. So, sharing that we have a plethora of opportunities in VCS for students to get across that stage. And then, of course, celebrating our A rating. And I was, interesting that the business community realizes that they're a part of that A grade. So, sharing the message that this is not just our A, it's a community A, it's an A from parents, it's an A for our students, it's an A from our teachers. Like, we all work together to ensure that we are moving in that direction to become that, that A-rated district. So, I just wanted to share with you, and I was supposed to present last month, so this is August data, and Cincin and I do have updated data, but in the two weeks that we actually launched this engagement program, we went, in two weeks, to eighteen total events, and those are spanning all school board districts. So, we've got the events organized by school board district. Ten-chamber events, seven business and industry associations, then we identify the different engagement types. Was it a meeting? Was it a presentation? Many times, the superintendent is with us and is presenting in the community or after-hour special events. We got three new business partners, and we identified multiple work-based opportunities for our students. What you don't see here is a September summary, but I will tell you that my team went to thirty-seven different events in September. We got fifteen new business partners. Our goal was five a month, fifteen. And then the work-based learning opportunities, we had over twenty-five different work-based learning opportunities. But now what I'm hearing when I'm out there is, oh yeah, we saw you guys yesterday at this event. Oh, we loved your presentation. That's amazing. Wow, you're doing such great things. So, I can see the value in this already that we're really getting the word out and our business community is seeing what we do and how we do it. So, we're excited to continue to move forward with that and see what our, our October results look like. And we're also, of course, looking at our strategic partnerships always. We're looking to partner with Space Florida Consortium as one of our newest strategic partners. We're looking at JetBlue, the State Attorney's Office. We're working with Student Services and the State Attorney's Office to develop some new curriculum and have those folks as a strategic partner. Duke Energy Construction. So, Denise Ribero is another one who is always out there looking for our strategic partners. Universal Studios, we're very close to finalizing a strategic partnership with them as well. So, you can see our goal is to connect three new business partners per month, but we have absolutely blown that one away. So, I think we're going to have to change that goal. And then securing those different student opportunities and then submitting to the superintendent. So, we're very excited to continue to share with you those updates on our strategic partnerships and opportunities. And really, the other most exciting piece of this is we just were asked to be a part of a NASA State Hub, which is a spin-off of the Space Florida Consortium. We were asked to write a letter, a letter to them saying that we would be involved. So, it is going to serve as a key partner for helping NASA connect with our students in specific programs, cybersecurity, aerospace, engineering, IT even, and offering then work-based learning experiences to our students. So, it really is a talent pipeline. And our first event with the NASA Orbit Hub is November 12th. I've got a representative from our department who will be going down there to hear more about what, how that's going to unfold. So, I'm excited to share more of that with you as that gets rolling as well. Again, building partnerships. So, we do have toolkits and information that we share. It is a toolkit that is, if we're adding, we're one brochure here, we're doing the same brochure somewhere else. We're trying to make sure that our message is intentional, but it's also consistent and that we're sharing the same information out in the community. Tiffany McCann is our community engagement specialist who works with developing those work-based learning opportunities. So, looking at field studies, guest speaking, internships, mentors and volunteers. So, ensuring that we continue to grow that. We're trying to make it easier for our partners to connect. We've got scanning codes now, the QR codes that they can connect and connect directly with us, and they will get a phone call or a teams or a meeting with, with our staff within twenty-four hours. All right. We've also got some exciting events coming. Some of you were at the welding ribbon cutting a few weeks ago. Our next one is our Level Up, which was the Soft Skills Summit. That's November 4th, sponsored by the Daytona Beach Chamber. I think we've got over a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-four students who will be attending that summit if you're available to come check that out. And then we've got some other activities that will be happening throughout the year. Just wanted to make sure you have those dates. I know that we have shared those with, with, I think, the secretary who does your calendars.
They got them on our calendar.
Thank you. And then we have a new initiative, which is really exciting, which is looking at the VCS leadership. So, taking a page out of some of the chambers and bringing our business community in to us and having to share with them behind the scenes, how are our schools and departments really work? It's been very successful, the first two. We've got lots of rave reviews, and we're looking forward to our next one in November with Student Services. We know that mentor coordinating, mentor coordinating and mentor retention is very important. So, last year, we noticed that we didn't have the mentor retention that we had in previous years. So, we're really looking at strategically realigning with what is it that we need to make sure our mentors are engaged and to make sure that our mentors stay connected with the schools. So, holding an annual training, making sure that there's an online ability for those mentors to train, to be able to go into the schools, help our schools understand what their role is, and making sure that they make those mentors feel welcome, showing appreciation, involving them. So, we're going to be working really closely with those schools and those mentor, those mentor people, folks who run the mentor program on the campuses to do that. Also, I want to share that, you know, I know that one of the superintendent's pillars is the reading initiative. And reading is, competency is the foundation for learning, and CTE does strengthen that in many ways that go overlooked. We actually had a study conducted here in Volusia County several years ago that was published in the Journal of Career and Technical Education Research that found when literacy strategies were embedded into integrated CTE courses, students made statistically significant gains in reading compared to peers who were in the non-integrated courses. And that's because CTE literacy comes alive in authentic ways. What are the students doing? They're analyzing medical charts, they're reading and interpreting blueprints, and they're working through technical manuals. So, it really helps them stay connected and passionate about reading, and it's a way for us that we can reinforcement, reinforce those strategies. So, CTE is excited to be able to partner with the reading initiative to do that. Our, our industry partners are also a big component of that. They're helping to make reading exciting and rewarding and are going to be working with us to motivate students to read through some literacy rewards and different activities, books, small engagement rewards, bundles, field trips, and enrichment experiences. So, again, Denise is working hard to get those business partners connected with us. So, I appreciate your time today. I believe that our ideas spark change, but it's really the people who carry that torch. And our CTE team in Volusia County, I think is number one in the state. We have some amazing talented folks who come from all different walks of life. And I would like to just introduce them to you quickly so that you can see the people behind all, all of this great work. Cecile Carlisle, you guys stand up, don't be shy, is our health science culinary, education, training, and criminal justice specialist. Kristy Grisowskis, Mrs. G, because her name is hard to pronounce, is our industry certification specialist. She works with all the program areas. Tiffany McCann, she's our community engagement specialist, and she works with the work-based learning opportunities and connects those business partners to students and vice versa. Nora Patey, she's our ag, arts AV, and JROTC specialist. Lisa Taylor, engineering, aerospace, and all of our trades programs. Denise Ribero doesn't really need any, any of this, but she's a strategic and business partnerships mentors, volunteers, and events. We all know Denise, we see her everywhere. And then, of course, Vince Rochink, a resident DJ and IT, marketing, and finance specialist. So, today, we've highlighted growth and where we're moving and innovation and how CTE is connecting to the community. But at heart of our message again is that every success story is that skills build futures. And with looking at marketing and recruitment at middle and elementary school, we do have a brand-new team member that we would like to introduce you to. This is our inaugural team member. This is, drum roll please. This is Casey the Career Cat, newest member of Career and Technical Education.
Come on in.
Casey is going to be attending events at middle school in the community, sharing all sorts of amazing opportunities in career and technical education.
That is awesome.
And Casey is delivering to each of you a twenty-five, twenty-six CTE Skills Builds Futures t-shirt and a toolkit as a symbol of our appreciation for your commitment to career and technical education. So, yay, Casey. So, every one of our teachers got a Skills Builds Future toolkit, and we want to make sure that you have one as well. So, again, any questions? I've got the team here to answer those for you, or we're going to roll right out of here.
We're going to start with Mr. Cologne.
Wow, wow, wow. First of all, I want to apologize to DJ Vince here because I should have had the music queued for you. I let you down, brother, and so please forgive me, but that won't happen again, I promise. Your presentation was amazing. More importantly, the work that you all are doing here in our county is amazing. CTE is an essential part of our success for lots of reasons, but more importantly, for students like the young lady who you saw up there, who's proud mom is sitting right there.
Arianna's mom is Cecile.
Correct. However, Cecile, can you tell us what your other daughter's doing?
She teaches at Lake's Elementary, on her CTE program.
Perfect. And so, I mean, that, that is why, one of the reasons why we're all here, I think. And so, you know, it's, it's not, you know, anecdotal, it's, it's living proof. You saw the one daughter, the second daughter. And like that, we have thousands of students across the many years that we've been here who have benefited from our programs. But the level in which this is going is next level. And I appreciate you and your team because I do truly believe we are leading despite, you know, one of the challenges we have is that we don't have a vocational hub or place. And Jamie, I see you looking at me. However, despite that challenge, what we are doing in meeting where students where they are is amazing. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And you could have all night long to keep presenting because what you presented was just, wow. And so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brosmer?
I second that. I've loved all of this, every detail, and in particular, how comprehensive your approach is to all of the opportunities that the students have. I will say, as a point of personal privilege, that you, I've already talked about agriculture and my, and my love for that. But in addition to the many years where I worked with natural resources, that included nine years as a water lobbyist. So, the fact that you added water, wastewater, stormwater to, to this extremely long and comprehensive list really jumped out at me because we were talking earlier about succession planning, and that's an area where there is a lot of retirement and the technologies have changed, and younger people are needed to come into that, that whole profession. So, I was especially delighted that you've added that. I just want to commend you. This, this was outstanding, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Appreciate your support.
All right. And I'd like to close. Thank you for everything, and I love attending all of the events, and I have gotten pulled into quite a few of them. And it is so nice to be out there and hear the stories from the public who their children are, you know, in programs or them learning about the programs that we have. I would, you probably knew I was going to ask this, but on slide twenty-two, and it's just something you can email me, that is the middle school to high school career pathways.
Yes.
You list the number of schools, but you don't list which schools they are. So, is there any way, because you don't have enough space.
Yes, I can. So, I have a whole presentation where you'll have the middle school to high school connection, and I will send that to you.
Okay, I would love to see that. And then, do we have any programs or academies right now where we are missing a teacher? Or are we fully staffed with our programs and academies? Do you know?
We, as of Monday, we were fully staffed. We have two JROTC positions that are open, but you know, those, those folks have to actually... We have two JROTC positions that are open, but you know, those folks have to actually... Oh, yes, that's right. We had a DVT at Seabreeze High School just two days ago.
Okay.
Other than that, we feel good. We started the year, like, almost fully staffed, and we've maintained that.
Right. Because it's hard, because you have people that specialize in this. And so, my third question, and it doesn't have to be answered here, but in the event that we do have, you know, because they are specialized, we have someone that is specialized in an area, and they have to go out for an extended period of time, have we figured out a plan for that? Because I think we have a situation like that out there right now at one of the schools, and I'm happy to talk to you about it. But I just want to know, you know, what do we do in cases like that? Because it's a little different when you need somebody to just come in and sub, and you can find somebody that, you know, has the credentials to be able to sub in an elementary classroom, I think. But what you guys do is so specialized, it's not necessarily where people can walk into.
And it does make it difficult, because think about, you know, if it's culinary, we're talking knives, and so we don't want someone in there if it's not going to be safe. So typically, what we do if it's a highly technical area is provide our CTE facilitators. That's their role on the campus, is to make sure that they continue with those lesson plans, make sure that there are activities for the students that align to the curriculum. But there are occasions where we just can't have them, you know, with saws and things if the teacher is out of the classroom. So we try to make sure that we balance maintaining the curriculum and keeping the students learning with safety. And our specialists and the facilitators work directly with those schools to ensure that that continues.
Thank you. And so, if there's no further questions, then it is 4:16. This meeting is adjourned, but we have to be back in here at 4:30.
Thank you all so much for your support. We appreciate you.
Thank you.